Like all the meeting in order to have a motion to approve the agenda, please. I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, if we can get you to stand, please, for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That extra noise, hopefully we don't have, oh, here comes Cory.
Yeah.
We're getting a little bit of feedback now.
A little.
A little feedback, yes, indeed. All right, uh, JD, if you can come to the microphone and present this morning, we appreciate it.
Good morning, it's a fine morning in Page County, sun shining, just can't see it because of the clouds.
That's right.
But it's out there. I did send up the engineers update to the board and a few other folks. Yesterday evening, our operations are, as usual, influenced by the weather. We picked up some needed rain, I believe, and I think it came such that the roads settled down. You know, the water infiltrating, a good thing. We, we told past yesterday with several crews out, we had no blades out on the gravel. No rock hauling trucks chewing up the gravel roads to get where the problem spots were. But that's changed today, the blades are out and the district's working on the harder roads or where there's potholes or washboards, usually near intersections. We are resuming rock haul, the quarries on the north end, or the quarries are north of the county. So we're hauling rock into the north end of the county. We had some edge rut complaints about a few spots when, when the weather settles out and soils are suitable, which we anticipate that being next week, will be over some of the districts and free up a couple of motor graders to, to work those edge ruts along Stanton Road first and then C Avenue later. Uh, C Avenue was constructed, or when C Avenue was constructed and paved, earth shoulders were placed as opposed to more conventional gravel shoulders, so that's been a challenge over the years. I'd call it penny, penny wise, pound foolish. They, they did save money initially, but we're paying for it ever since. So, and once again, I think we got that spring rain that helps firm up the roads. It is spring, or it's gonna be spring. Last week, we did some services on the motor graders, because we, you know, I do anticipate a stretch of running the motor graders pretty hard here in the spring, get stuff shaped up from the winter. Oh, well, let me back up a little bit to the shoulders. One of the reasons we're not working the shoulders right away, or immediately here, is because we don't wanna disturb that service in, if we were to pick up another snow, another late spring snow, we'd have the shoulders all loosened up and prone to lose extra rock off the edge. So we're gonna leave them be for just a bit. On the bridge up on J twenty, the F twenty bridge there, east of the Russell Corner, where we made progress last week, placed as, as, as planned, we placed both abutments. And this week, they are scheduled to place riprap on the slopes underneath the bridge itself, because you can't do that once the beams are in place, or you can do it well, once the beams are in place. So the riprap underneath the beams needs to be placed before the beams are set. The beams are tentatively set, are tentatively scheduled to set next month, twenty second of March. And then I would remind us that we closed the bridge on the twenty second of February. And should, should they get the riprap in this week, as flying on, weather dependent, of course, to have a bridge closed, demolished, and beam set on the new structure are, is, is right on scale. I'm, I'm pleased with the progress so far and hope the, well, once we get, excuse me, once we get the beam set, then all we'll be working on is forms, will not be in dirt. So should it rain occasionally, they'll be able to progress nonetheless. I've got a few other meetings this week, primarily of the, of the virtual kinds, some RPA meetings here, a watershed management program, authority for the eastern western Nishna Bada. And then, of course, mid-April is, is the DOT budget and program are, are due to the DOT.
On that topic, JD, could we, our next evening meeting is, whoops, I'm muted there. Our next evening meeting is April thirteenth.
Yes.
Could we have that presentation that evening?
Yes, that'd be a perfectly good time for a public hearing involving the road, road program and budget.
Okay, thank you.
I should have, you know, proposed it to the week before that, for the, for the board, but we did a public presentation of that. She said the thirteenth of April?
Yeah, I believe it's, if I look at the calendar right, guys, this is our next evening meeting, it's the second one. Yep, okay, yeah, and are we starting at six?
Six.
Okay, six o'clock.
Yeah, it's fine, questions for me?
So you, on the edge rut, on the Stanton Road, that's gonna be the first project, and then you're gonna move to C, is that correct?
Given the C is earth, as opposed to rock.
Right.
Shoulders, it'll, it'll need to drive.
Drive, good, okay.
Drive one, and then we'll move over there.
Okay.
Uh, I, I do, although it's not on the engineers update, I do have a topic for the board. Uh, we, we talked about this briefly a couple of times ago, maybe several times. Uh, there's this chunk of, of money from COVID that the DOT got from the feds, and they're distributing it out to the counties in their usual fashion. Page County gets about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars into the local budget.
Okay.
Uh, you know, through the road stats on, it'll come to the treasurer, they anticipate that in, in April. Another, basically, quarter million dollars. I, at the time, I proposed to the board, we use that on a local rock haul contract, as opposed to, you know, in the past, we use farm-to-market lot. This would be local, local money through the, you know, our county budget on local roads. At our, in our normal rate, that, that'll take up forty-one miles.
Okay.
To pick up forty-one miles of local roads. Jeff Sherlock put together a, a map of where he thinks that's needed, right here. Uh, I'd like to, I don't think it needs to be on the program because it's a maintenance thing.
Right.
But I'd like a sense of the board that, that yes, that'd be a worthy cause to spend the COVID money, this, this extra money on.
Comments, thoughts, anybody?
You know, I don't necessarily need it on the agenda, I can, I can discern what the board wants, if they let me know.
I think it makes good sense, twenty-week period.
Yeah, but, you know, hopefully by the time you get the money, we'll be able to get rock everywhere.
Yeah. I think. Right, right, we would, well, looking at the map, it's distributed both north and south, and we can put in, you know, we can address, uh,
Problem.
Coverage or, or time with, you know, of course, this, you know, we're two weeks away.
Sure.
They've been two weeks away for weeks and weeks.
Yeah.
But.
Well, just, you know, when all that rock was on the farm-to-market road, there's a lot of complaints about it was so thick. Once it's done, right, and then later off, just, just long as we don't put it all out there and then have it lost.
Well, that's why we're doing it in spring, so it doesn't, not so hard for the book rate as it is in July.
You know, I, I understand, I was one of those that complained about being thick. It, it's amazing to me how people disagree on that. Some people want it thick, some people don't want it thick. Can we find anything that everybody agrees on?
No.
Okay.
Well, and just basically, it's put on the road, ready for rock, which I know you know that, but just sort of, isn't put on the grid at all, you know, I've had several calls and things of that nature, sort of. But no, the, the farm-to-market roads always get priority and get more money in rock, and that would be nice to put this on the other road.
Yes.
I agree totally, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great, great, thank you, JD.
Thanks, JD.
All right. So, excellent. Well, next on the agenda here in a minute is to discuss and approve reallocation time with Tom Norrie. He's our safety director, the give us a hand in public health. Tom and I chatted very briefly about this a week ago, and we put it on the agenda for us to discuss in the board room. But Tom, if you'd like to come on up, I think we're, we're at eight forty-four now, and we'll get ready here momentarily. All right, we have also Public Health Director Jess Erdman is on the line. Jess, feel free to, to chime in as you wish. But with the COVID clinics that are ongoing and with the anticipation that in April, we're gonna have COVID clinics for the general population, that's what we're hearing. I don't know if that microphone's on, Tom, you, Tom, you've been blessed, offices in the annex and has assisted with public health clinics, which, you know, kind of makes you a candidate here because we're shorthand. And your work in safety, we think, is extremely important. We've made great progress with regard to our claims history and our safety culture is improving, much to your credit. Credit of Mark Schaper, your combined effort. We appreciate the work of our employees to focus more on safety and the importance of, of those, of going home safely and keeping our premiums in line. But we are at a point where, would like to get your thoughts and the board's thoughts here on reallocation, temporarily some reallocation of your, of your time. No, we, as mentioned, are pretty shorthanded in public health, and we've got a real crunch time coming up, probably over the next sixty days. So, and you indicated to me that you're, you're game to do whatever the board wishes you to do. We appreciate your willingness. Is there any concern on anybody's part to reallocate, and then what's, what is the right number? I would, I don't know, I, I threw out to you thirty of the forty hours to be into, into public health. I don't know if that's right or wrong, Jess, I think you use every hour of your help that you get.
Well, as you know, you've worked the clinics, and you know how time-consuming they are. And there's a lot of prep time that goes into it before that they need help over there with, so, um, you know, but it's twenty-five, thirty hours, begins with the whole COVID thing, it's twenty-five, thirty hours, so. I mean, I, I've been, uh, doing other things through the whole crisis, so. And with the pods probably opening up, we're gonna have two centers open or whatever they're planning. So it just makes sense.
If could, in this transition, Gary, while you're kind of doing the public health thing, is the majority of your job, can we readjust your schedule to have you arrive, instead of at seven AM, have your hours coincide with public health's hours?
We can do that, I mean, I, some of them get over there about seven-thirty.
Okay.
So, I mean.
Or, or also, if you know you've got something you need to go work with secondary roads for a little bit, kind of have some flexibility.
Yeah.
You can just notify both JD and Jess where you need to be, so they know.
Because usually what I do on Mondays is with secondary roads, they have a staff meeting around seven-thirty-ish. And I attend that to kind of get an idea what they're doing, what I need. So, I mean, I can be fly to move the hours.
I mean, that's. I, I think the biggest concern, as long as you know what they're doing, so you can be a part of that, if you feel like it's something you need to be a part of, that's my biggest thought, so.
Right, live comments, he and Jess can work it out.
But I, you, Justin, JD, I think that's not gonna be a problem, so.
But I would let, I, I would have those discussions with Jess in terms of your agreement on where the schedule goes. I'd let her drive that, but I'm sure the flexibility can be built into you not missing the secondary roads.
No problem.
Okay, and I don't know, I mean, we say sixty days, it might be ninety days, I, I have no idea.
We, we want it to be three weeks from the first start. I mean, who knows?
Yeah. Now, on that topic, uh, of, we never really did, we had a, a proposal from Mark Schaper to do some additional consulting, where Mark's contract for your contract had expired or has expired. And Mark had proposed being kind of on call and doing some backup for Tom. And I, I don't have a contract proposal in front of me, but I just, I wonder if we could talk about that here this morning, and the wisdom of that, or lack thereof.
I, I personally think that it would hurt for another year, at least, to have him on call.
I don't have that either, what does that cost?
I can't remember the rates.
I don't have, let me get numbers prepared for four thousand. Four thousand.
I think his contract was like four thousand.
And that's to answer questions on call?
It'd be, it'd be a consult.
You can just reach out to him.
Correct.
And, and one of the biggest, yeah, I'm just gonna say, one of my biggest thoughts with the Sosha thing going on with some of the other states, and what's going to happen, if something happens in Iowa, they tighten up. I think Mark could be a real plus factor to back you up in order, we need to do something really quick. And that was my thought.
Yeah.
So.
He would be a contact, like Alan said, a contact or a consultant to me, if something came up where I could just reach out to him and talk to him about it. I mean, we, you have financial consultants, you have HR consultants, I mean, and they, they, yeah, it's four thousand dollars, but it's a lot cheaper than what he had originally.
Right, we had a hand for what he has provided, it's just been a pretty good, pretty good fit.
Don't we also have IMWCA and, is it safety now, safety?
IMC, or IWM.
IWM.
But we also, I mean, I just have that good training program to, that directly as well.
True, but we don't, uh, we don't currently belong to any safety council. I know there's a organization in Omaha, the one on the eastern side of the state, General Asia, Iowa, Illinois, safety council, and a lot of safety directors are members of, we, we currently are.
You've been doing safety for twenty-some years, right? That was a long, long time, so I would imagine you should have pretty vast knowledge of.
I don't know everything.
But I mean, you know, you'd be a good advisor to somebody else for a time, so. I think it's nice to bounce things off of the people, but the.
I haven't any way to do that. One of my former employees, we had, we had a safety consultant, the company did, and we used him for the exact same thing. If something came up, we, we would bounce things off him.
Is there any limit to what you can ask him, what you can ask?
I can ask him pretty much anything related to safety.
I know, uh, for what it's worth, before Tom and before Mark came on board, we were at, we were kind of the poster children for the IMWCA. We were on the verge of being booted out of the plant, and a high-ranking officer in the IMWCA said that now Page County is being discussed statewide, but not as a problem child, but as a model. What, what's been done with a commitment to safety and, uh, I think in three years, that's tremendous.
I, I do too.
And it saves taxpayers.
And I, I think Mark's connection hasn't hurt it any at all.
No, I don't either.
And I think he adds a perspective, and I agree with Melissa that we do have talents within the insurance pool, but he adds something from the outside that kind of feeds that and makes it even. So I'm not so sure, I don't know, I think maybe put it on the agenda for next week for discussion and approval.
Okay. How did we get the contract email?
Yeah, I've got it.
Do you say it was four thousand dollars?
For the year.
And I was just meaning to, I thought it would be important, you know, especially if this is the last year that Mark's gonna transition. It's important to start looking at those things and figuring out, because if Mark's not gonna be for next year, Tom needs to really always start looking through those and researching those things, and then he's pushing them back, you know, get his expertise on it, so that way moving forward, Tom will be able to use.
And maybe Mark can help show Tom how to work with the IWMCA also on that, to make sure they know where we're at from the safety perspective to where.
They already know.
They, they do, but the communication isn't strong between that person and Tom as much as probably it is between Mark and Tom, so.
I talked to that individual about what's your question here.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that's the way they, from my understanding.
Yeah, yeah, so, but Mark can maybe give you some guidance on how to get in touch with that, so.
Well, it's a good, like, because before, Martin, we worked with Ed extensively, for like, Ed was coming down to me for the company here, and then also, there's lots of injuries, or I, I know he returned to Mark, but what I was trying to do was, like, have, I would reach out to Ed and I would go through some things, and make sense of the training, or, um, give us some direction, take it into account, kind of like he does, but it's more thorough, and research, and utilize. So I was just thinking it was important, we should make sure we're.
We're ready to go.
Yeah.
I agree.
If that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, uh, so we'll get that on the agenda next week. We'll have contract proposals emailed, re-emailed to the three board members, we'll take a look at, we'll put it on the agenda. And I, I do wanna go back real quick, just for clarity, in terms of your work with public health. I think, I don't think there's any question, Jess will respect what duties you have, but I think she needs, somebody needs to be in charge of your schedule. So you guys had that discussion, figure out what that schedule will be, and then come to an agreement, so we're, you know, we're all on the same page, okay?
Awesome. Tom, thank you very much. Thanks, Tom. Get to work.
Yeah.
Thanks for all you did. Thanks, Tom.
Well, we're running a little bit behind, Angie, can you come to the podium, please? It's eight fifty-four, eight fifty-six.
Good morning.
I have to move that mic down.
Better?
Yeah, that's great.
I really don't have any more information. I did reach out to another business in regards to moving the register, and the business is unable to do both sides of that register, the heating and the cooling, they can only do one or the other. So I'm not gonna have a proposal on that. Um, he did make a recommendation that we look at building the wall around that unit. So I've reached out to contractor, and they are coming today. So unfortunately, I don't have any more to report today, but continuing to look.
What was the deadline on the moving, what was the deadline?
The proposal expires on the nineteenth.
Okay.
And I'm sure we can, you know.
Extend that.
Perfect. I mean, I think it's a good option, as I said, I know, I know nothing about carpentry. So when initially I had the contractors come, I mentioned that, because I know I can ask questions that make no sense, and they kind of laughed at it, because it would make, instead of having a, a wall from floor to ceiling, you're losing that. I guess, I can't think of the right word, like the security, like it's not really a lockable room, and because you're gonna have a space around the unit, but I don't think most of us plan to lock our office anyway. My, my office is locked as a whole, I don't need to lock that specific space. So I think revisiting it is a, a good option, if he's, if he feels it's feasible. I think the contractor knows more about that than we would, you know, the air on the building and whatever all that involves, so.
They can make that, I've done things like that, when you make a section around it removable, even though it might not look removable, it's made to take off, so you can work on it, put it back, pretty simple. I think that's a good idea for what, who would have guessed it costs so much to move on and.
Exactly, yeah, so we are continuing to look, I don't think it's a race, I'm not, I mean, I definitely wanna do it how it needs to be done. And I think very open to options, not like I have some grand scheme in my head, some walls would be fabulous, so.
Well, when you're all said and done, it needs to suit what you need, and, you know, give, give the most thought, talk about what the options are, and make a choice, and tell us what you, you're gonna need for the next probably thirty, forty years. So.
That's the way you'd still have heat and air, which would be nice.
Yes, that would be nice.
And I think whatever the decide to do on the walls, we have to revisit that again, because we've already approved the work.
The budget, money for. Yeah, we've got the budget, I don't think, I mean, I think it's all in the details, although, what, uh, where are we at in terms of construction? Did you talk with him about working evenings or weekends, or is that even important to you, maybe you don't mind the mess?
You know, I can't, I can't recall which conversations I had between two carpenters. I know that was a discussion point, but I honestly can't remember what the final one, what he had talked about. And since he's coming today, I can ask that again. I don't think it'll be a huge mess, since we're not doing any tear down, we're really just putting up, so I think that would make minimal mess. So we're already gonna have to displace one of my desks, but that'll be my part-time desk, so it really won't throw our office into any kind of, you know, hard, hard to work around, I don't think. So I'll say, you know, preferred, but I really don't think it's necessary to have them work off hours unless it's something that you feel is.
No, I, I just was kind of wondering, because if, if that wasn't part of the quote, the quote probably would go up because
Right.
their labor costs would.
They don't work at night.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay, well, I don't think it'd be a big mess either, you're gonna be, your staff's gonna be the one most inconvenienced in bringing material in case. Okay, well, keep us posted, if you would.
Will do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, it's nine o'clock, discussing annex property. We had last week talked about going and everybody getting canceled again, okay? Kind of an odd piece of property, yes, it is. Uh, I re, I tried to reach out to the homeowner, she had given me a cell phone number, and when I dialed it, uh, I got a male voice, and I did not leave a message, because I'm not sure that I got the number down correctly. So I'll go knock on her door. But at any rate, any thoughts?
Did she have any comments on how many times people are walking across from Washington?
No.
I just, I, I find it hard to leave people walking across the yard on the sidewalk right there, because there's still that sidewalk coming up the street, it's up on our property.
Yeah, on the, on the west end of the property.
Right.
Which is beyond the scope of her property law.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know, I guess. I don't know. I guess, and I don't know if she would want to post a sign there in the morning that says private property. And I guess if, you know, we can encourage people to ours, but I don't know if it's our job to put up a sign on her property. And I don't know, we aren't going to build a fence there. Um, I don't know. I just, I find that hard. I don't understand why people would do that.
Really, she's going to have to put a sign.
Yeah.
You know, private property, please don't walk with a graph or something, you know, use sidewalk, please use sidewalk, something like that.
Right.
I don't know that we can really put a sign on her. We could put a sign on us, but that's, the problems already happened. Shouldn't I get there?
Yeah, I know. I don't know how to solve it. I went over there and looked and I looked at these lines. I just don't. Um, I can say there's a lot of people there on a busy day with shots or something on the confidence, but I didn't see anybody parking out there. So they're parking in the lot and parking on the street on, what, on seventeen?
Yeah, seventeen, eighteen, maybe. It's seventeen predominantly.
Yeah.
I didn't, in my times, I didn't mean that there weren't people parked on walks, right? But I didn't see any. Um, so.
I'm not sure. Let her know. Maybe suggest she puts a sign on them.
Yeah.
Or she wants to, like many other property owners do, she feels necessary to put up a fence in some type. We'd support it. We'd just like to make sure it's on her property line, not the house. So, or not on her property, just in case.
Well, she had mentioned she, she didn't have the resources to put a fence in our conversation. So. All right. Well, I'll visit back with her. Maybe encourage her that, uh, uh, when she sees the trespasser, that maybe kindly make a note to them. And then if it persists, to alert the, or the PD and ask them for assistance.
I would get some very simple sign, even handwritten, would do, would do a lot.
Probably.
If she put that up.
Okay, perfect. All right. So, um, I'll knock on her door because I don't trust the phone number that I transcribed. Might be the right one, may not be. Okay. We've got a little bit of break, nine, ten. I'd like to, uh, uh, bring to your attention an idea that I'd had, I'd like your input on. Um, over the weekend, was reading through the American Recovery Plan that was passed along on Thursday. And, uh, the NICO, which I'm glad we're now a member of NICO, an estimate of the number of dollars that we're going to receive. And, uh, the dollars are significant. Um, I would like your opinions, guys. Can we, can we maybe ask our elected officials to, uh, act in a advisory capacity to study the funding and the criteria to come to this board with a recommendation for how to, uh, how to utilize those funds?
I think that's, would be very, that's why they're elected to be.
Hell, we have one elected in the group. Would you be willing to serve on that committee? You and Angie and.
Yeah, sure. Do we have any specific, I guess?
Um, we know roughly what it's going to be, but we don't know any specifics.
Is there a specific guideline or?
There are some guidelines for how they could be sent.
I'll send, I'll send over that email that had from, from Iowa Supervisor Page.
Okay.
Like, and talks about some general guidelines.
Well, I think overall it might be nice even for us to reach out to all department heads to make sure.
I, I think, yeah.
That there's no specific needs, you know, all of the electives could, I'm sure come up with things in our department. Plus the two, to reach out to all the other department heads to see if there are other specific needs that really need to be met. And then try to sit down and really prioritize those. Um.
Well, your due diligence would include countywide, but we'd like to funnel it into a manageable recommendation. And I think that over the few weeks that you guys might work on this, um, you can take input from department heads. You can do a survey monkey with the community, um, to get some other ideas and then bring us.
If we have the guidelines or have them be spent, would really, just even the topic, we know who to, who'd even ask what their opinion is.
What's in that, uh, NICO? In the, in the NICO email and also in the supervisor's affiliate, uh, that was recorded on Wednesday of last week. With general purposes, cannot be used for tax really.
You, and then you can send it from you to whoever else you want to send it once we're ready to go.
But I, I did talk with Angie, not talk with the chair, but not talk with Colleen. And then I also wondered too, what your thought is. He's not elected, but should the assessor be in that court committee? He's appointed, but plays a very important role in county government.
Possibly. Okay. Let's, let's start out with the elected and then, because I still think it's something that maybe even some of the, um, we may want even invite in some of the, at some point, see, uh, current economy, make sure they're aware. They have some insight into things going on, some other dollars available. You know, we've got to make sure we don't do something that's getting done at some other point. That's my concern. But I think it's good to start with the electeds first and then see how far out we need to include the circle. I don't know. I think, I think Jason could be on the second group. Okay? I think in all fairness.
Well, uh, the, we don't have the final dollar yet, but, uh, the estimate from NICO is we will receive two point nine four million dollars uh, out of this stimulus plan, um, fifty percent of which will be delivered to us in April. I've alerted Angie to, uh, I've alerted Angie to checking.
Uh, you can call half the day.
Yeah, you can go half the day with that. Uh, and infrastructure needs, I know NICO and the Iowa supervisors talked about broadband being one of the issues. But I know the governor's putting a lot of the resources toward broadband state budget. That's why I'd like our life bits to kind of funnel through some of this.
Like I said, that's where it gets so confusing because there's so many things going on in this county with broadband. It's not involving us. And I want to make sure that what we do is geared toward, I don't know.
Well, I think too, it's important to read through the documents. Even like on our side versus security grant that, as we received in our office, we're, we're very excited to have the funding, but now as we've gotten more information, it's much more restricted. And so that's the hard part now is there's lots of things we thought we could do with it, but with those things, if it, if they're things that impact the whole county or like the whole courthouse, uh, those have to be allocated out and based on how many, like how many employees we actually have. So it's actually not as helpful from a, you know, like we can't apply all of that towards that cost then. So.
Normally there's strings attached.
Yes. And there are strings attached. There's, there's going to be reporting requirements that are still not finalized.
And that's the big thing is it's going to be back on you. That's where you've got to kind of helping us guide us where how fast we want to go. Where we want to go with this is the reporting is going to be the biggest issue.
And it's going to be reported correctly.
If we do something wrong, it's back out of somewhere else. It isn't planned on big steps. So.
All right. Well, with your permission, I'll send an email to the electeds and have them convene them a chairperson. And, uh, ever is, is thirty days for some sort of preliminary report too early?
I don't think so.
Okay.
And if you guys, if you feel like you want one of us to be involved or it's time to be, you know, afternoons usually work best for me. But I can be flexible. So, yeah, yeah, yeah. So we, yeah. And I'd be glad to volunteer to do that. So.
Well, then when we have the parameters of what.
Well, we, they're kind of being, being this couple of days in a couple of weeks. I mean, we've got some general parameters and some general guidance on where the money can be allocated and.
They passed a bill. Let's see what they, they passed a bill. Now let's see what.
Now let's see what's in there. If you've got the payment stream thirteen hundred or however many payments.
Yeah.
So anyway, but, uh, overall, uh, that's something that, um, I think we need to do some planning and not just sixty days. Get one point four billion or five billion dollars. Now what do we do? So.
Once we have the funding, I'll be more.
Yeah, yeah. Well, no, I agree. It's been kind of nerve wracking this last couple of years, finding.
All right. Well, I'll send out that email then and we'll get that, get that engaged. And, uh, all right, nine, ten. And we are ready for Chris. Chris, good morning to you.
Good morning.
So you have asked us, you've got an agreement now with Zetron, the state of Iowa for nine one one shared services, which includes the medical dispatch, correct?
Yes, correct. You've all received the email, uh, it would have been three weeks, three, four weeks ago from Zetron, from Cody, uh, outlining all of the benefits and the costs and everything associated with us converting over to the shared services.
Any questions over that information that we got?
I don't. I mean, that's, everything is still pretty much like it was before, Chris, isn't it?
Yeah, correct. This just added the actual dollar amount if we make payments rather than buying it upfront.
And we're still looking at this also includes, uh, the other program, correct?
Yes, this will, this will add services to the county by giving us emergency medical dispatch, the pre nine one one answer, uh, mapping, the CAD mapping to all the, or to all the officers, mobile cars that have the computers in them, stuff that we don't have now. And it will be a cost savings to us at a little bit for the first three years. But after that, it's going to be a big cost savings for nine one one shared service board.
How soon, how soon does everything go into place once we agree to this?
It's usually, uh, uh, about a sixty day window. So, and we told them we didn't want to start till, uh, January or July one. That's the next fiscal year.
Okay. Good enough. So I know one time, Chris, you talked about implementing it earlier than fiscal year. They were going to delay the payment. Uh, so that plan's off the table?
No, that is still something we can still talk to them. If we want to start, if, if they have a window open up to start installing some of the software and hardware, they will do that for us and then hold the payment until July one.
I'd just like to take a moment to encourage you to try to do that. I think the sooner we implement, the better protected our population is with regard to dispatch.
Yeah, I agree with that, Chris. If they're able to do it sooner, I, you need a, you need a motion on that to.
Well, just, or just, just in the motion here, our encouragement would be to, to work with them to see if it can be implemented before July one, if at all.
Jacob on Scott's.
Yeah, I, what was the, where is the, are we going to borrow the money? Does that ever come, get that figured out?
No, we're not borrowing any money, are we? Or are we?
Negative. We're, we're just going to start, we're going to make payments for the first three years instead of borrowing money to make the one payment upfront.
Okay. All right. Okay. Yeah. So we're paying a little bit of interest over three years rather than borrow on the, what was a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars or some big number?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Any thoughts, Melissa?
No, Chris and I have talked about it and with how his fund works and everything, we thought, even though there will be a little bit of interest, if not, we're going to have to do a transfer from the general fund and then an interim loan. And, uh, we thought it might just be cleaner just to pay a little bit of some loan.
Long term, it makes a lot of sense.
Absolutely. Yeah.
And to get the services in there as soon as possible, we thought it would.
I'll make a motion to approve the county agreement with Zetron, state of Iowa for shared nine one one services and be implemented as quickly as possible.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Armstrong, second by Holmes. Any other discussion? Carry down all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries three, no. Thank you, Chris, for your work. Good luck and, uh, if you hit any snags, let us know, but hopefully a smooth sailing.
Denver, thank you on behalf of dispatch. Thank you and on behalf of the public for getting all these services added to the county. It's going to be great. So thank you very much.
Well, we've come a long way. When this was first discussed a long time ago, we were looking at a very big expenditure with a high maintenance cost. And, uh, this was a great solution. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
All right. Excellent. Well, uh, we're a minute late. We have guests from Omaha. I apologize. We normally are right on time, but we're, we're not like the bullet train today. We're one minute late. I'd like to introduce Jamie to come to the podium. Maybe introduce your guests to our crowd here in the building and on Zoom today.
Is this one on?
Yes, yeah.
Well, I get started, I'm going to pass out, uh, some information to you guys real quick. And I hope you guys need a break or you're ready to go right into it. Either one works for us because we're on your schedule.
We're ready. Yeah, we're ready. Thank you.
You have, have one for the other too?
No, I, I'm sorry. We'll have to share.
We'll have a digital copy and we have several other copies that one we're kind of done. We can leave you probably at least two or three more copies.
All over, yes.
Yeah.
All right. We'll share this. All right. Well, Jamie, thanks for coming and, uh, bringing your crew. We're excited to hear what you have to tell us and, uh, learn more about.
For sure. I think you guys can come up here.
And we, we have this one shared handheld. If you gentlemen like to use that, somebody wants to hit the podium or vice versa, whatever.
Yeah, we'll kind of say a little bit of Rob Robin every once in a while. Speaking, I know that with the people on Zoom, we want to have be in front of the microphones. So we'll make sure we try and get in there. So, thank you, everybody. Thank you, uh, town board and town sheriff's department for having us here, taking the time to listen to us a little bit about who we are. And hopefully you get to know us a little bit. Um, as Chuck said, I'm Jamie Ekman. I'm the director of business development for Carlson West Pavond Architects. Um, I've enjoyed several conversations with supervisor Morris about kind of your current jail needs and what opportunities there are to kind of, for some growth and some change within the county. So we're really excited to talk about kind of how we can assist in that journey. Um, today we mainly wanted to highlight some points, some kind of our approach to the planning and design process and how we can use that process to help you guys achieve your goals for successful planning, design and construction of a new law enforcement center. Um, I know you've heard from a couple of other groups already that have different processes, different approach methods, um, different things. So really, I know that you probably already have some questions coming into this. So really we want you guys anytime along the way to kind of stop us, ask for clarification, ask for more information or anything along the way. Just real, you know, any questions you have for the approach or what's different from what you've heard. So feel free to, um, interject whenever. So in lieu of a true formal presentation, I did hand everybody kind of a big packet of information. And this is, you know, for you guys to kind of go through at your leisure. I know architecture reading is always extremely exciting for everybody. Uh, but what we wanted to do is kind of flip through this, leave you with more information than we're able to really kind of stand in here and talk at you with, but hit some highlights along the way. Um, so just kind of starting through this, a little bit of overview. As, uh, Chuck said, we're Carlson West Pavond Architects. We are a firm of about twenty-four people. We have architects, community planners, interior designers, construction administrators and support staff. Uh, we have been around for thirty-four years and, but we have a long history planted in law enforcement and justice architecture. Um, we did have a Zoom introduction call last December with supervisor Morris and Sheriff Palmer and Mr. Shackelford from the sheriff's department. And Al Pavandra was on that call. He's one of our, our senior founding principals. And then also Mike West, who is one of our senior principals who's here with us today. They've been in law enforcement and jail and public safety architecture for longer than even we've been around for thirty-four years. They came from another nationally renowned firm. Ja, uh, Al was their main justice and jail designer. And he left that firm to start his own practice, soon brought Mike with him. So they've been working in this justice sector for over forty years each. So it really is kind of a key market sector that our firm was founded on. And then Matt House is, you'll hear from both of these guys later, but Matt is our project manager, project architect. And he brings over fifteen years law enforcement and justice experience. So one of the last key team members that I really wanted to highlight was Mark Martin, and Mark Martin, we bring on as a jail planner and operations specialist, he was on the Zoom call with us last December, and what he brings, where he addresses the study portion is from an operations and procedures process. He spent twenty three years as a jail administrator of standards, he's created jail standards, planning procedures, and he's even led jail reform and wrote jail standards for many jurisdictions. He, I think what's important to note about Mark is that he really comes out of study, not as an architect or as a contractor, but truly as a jail operations and procedures specialist. So one of the things that I think everyone who was on the Zoom call last December can attest to was that Mark can get way in the weeds very quickly, and he likes to stay there. And what we do is we feel that that, what that brings to our study is somebody who's really focused on your true needs, is he, he doesn't have a stake in necessarily the architecture or the construction of the project, instead, he really dives into, what are your demographics and what is your trend and what is going on in Page County? And he doesn't take a study off the shelf and kind of dust it off and say, hey, this is a county about your same size, this is what you need, he's going to find out what you need here. And Matt will kind of walk through that process that he really leads you through, but really, he's not tied, at the end of the day, at the end of his studies, he's not tied to the architecture or the construction of the project, so there really is no benefit to necessarily inflate or provide something more than what you need, he really just shows you, this is what you need. And then we work with him to take his concept and his information and turn that into a building design. So that was kind of, like I said, I wanted to introduce our team, our kind of key players of who we have. I'm going to turn it over to Mike and Matt, and Mike is going to talk a little bit more about kind of what our experience as a firm is with some projects, and then I know Matt will talk kind of overall approach and how we lead you through those steps. But like I said, we might have some questions for you, if you guys have some questions for us, just let us know.
Super, thank you, Jamie.
Again, my part will go pretty, pretty quickly, I want to, we want to, certainly want to leave time for, for your questions.
Sure.
And then Matt's going to go through some process, our process. If you just go to page seven, just, just real quickly, I just wanted, we show this graphic, this, these projects we've done in, in Page County, they're in that area, listed at the top, and you know, some of these we've, we've done years and years ago, but we're not a stranger here, you, you have, you probably recognize some of these buildings, not necessarily recognize them, you have been here in the past. Next page is just a map of, of down bottom, Nebraska and Iowa, justice, public safety projects, and you can see there's quite, quite a number of them, and then about, doesn't mean a whole lot tied to you folks, but we've done work and we've, we've had people seek us out around the country, and we've, we have active work in multiple states currently. And these, and these are all aspects of public safety and justice, there's courthouse, or county jail, or police station, or fire, we've done these projects. Our team also worked with Mark Martin. And then the next couple of pages are really just a listing of local, so these are Nebraska and Iowa projects only, we've listed, I think Iowa, which is in orange. And we've separated them out, either a planning study or it's a public safety project, or maybe it's a combined, combined jail, police facility. And in many cases also, these start out as a study, just like this, this potentially one, we come up with the, with the, the needs of the, of the community, so we've got to pair that with a budget. So in some cases, those needs exceed the budget, so we do, we phase things out over time, prioritize things, which is a very important part of our, of our planning process, prioritize things so that they fit the budget. And then, and then master plan the facility so it can be added to later. So we've got, we've got an active project right now in Washington State where it is, we came in and put a, put an adult juvenile corrections facility in, we're later on came in with fire management facility with that, and now we're working on courts and police addition to the same facility, all because those were needs that were established years ago, master plan the original building to the fifties and, and extend now. And the thing, I was, Matt.
Thanks for your time today, guys. You know, really, our, our process starts off with, with the study, and the study really is mostly a, a study of what you guys need and what, what, what Mark Martin works with, works through with you. And, and what I want to say is, you know, Mark Martin, he's, he's a very good and understands how to, how to plan a jail, but he works with your guys, your guys are the ones that are going to have to, at, at the end of the day, your sheriff is going to operate the jail, he works with them to develop a plan, he sees how they operate their current jail, he, he, you know, he advises them on things that are current trends, but again, at the end of the day, it's their jail, they're the ones that have to run it, we, we try and design to what they're going to need. And he's just, he's just an assist to them to understand, maybe to see some trends, maybe that, and size the jail really to what they need. So we start with the study, which is, again, is a lot of, it's a lot of demographic information, he, he'll look at national trends, local trends, he'll look at your current population, your current, not just your inmate population, but your current population of your county, is your county growing, is it shrinking, how is that going to affect inmate population in the future, to really make sure that we're, we're getting to the right size of the jail. Because at the end of the day, what drives the cost of the jail is the number of inmates and the type of inmates you have to have. You know, different types of inmates, you know, if you, if you can live with a lot of dorm style housing, that's a lot less expensive than having to deal with a lot of max security. And so having Mark Martin do these, this study at the beginning really helps you get to a point where you're, you're getting the jail to be the right type of jail that, that fits this county and what they... So again, he's looking at capacity projections and, and he, he projects these things out into the future to see where things, things kind of are going. Once he kind of develops that study, and we work, you know, we'll, we'll see what he's developing and kind of work with him and, and help him with some graphics a lot of the time. One thing that we do, work with him a lot, I don't know if you guys have selected a site yet, or if you know where you want to put this, so we'll, we'll work with you to help develop, we, we use a site matrix where we actually score, if you have like four or five sites in mind, so we kind of try and bring a scientific process to that, so it doesn't become a, well, you know, a lot of the time, you'll get some, you know, not my backyard kind of thing, or, or you'll get, or you'll get people that, you know, it's somewhere, you know, there's another city in the county, I mean, we've had that issue before, where it's two competing cities really in the county, they both want the jail because there's jobs associated with it, and it, and it becomes kind of a political, political deal where, you know, we can bring kind of a scientific approach to that, so that we can put it in the right versus to the, what, you know, the topic. You know, and, and part of that includes, you know, understanding how it works in tandem with the courthouse, understanding what the infrastructure needs are at the site, you know, whether or not we need to bring utilities to the site, if the site needs a tremendous amount of grading or a flat site, a lot of that kind of plays into that, and helps us understand what, what the best location for the, for the facility would be. So once we've kind of developed, come through the study, and Mark has a, basically, he gives us your population, what, what he thinks the, the amount of beds you're going to need, he helps us develop, we call a program, which is really just list, a listing of all the spaces in the jail, what the, what the jail really needs to, to operate, we'll, we'll at that time start actually, you know, doing our, laying out the jail, and, and on, if we have a site selected by then, then we'll lay it out on that site. Sometimes we, we actually may, you know, if we have multiple sites and we can make multiple sites, you know, we may, we may put it on different sites to see if it fits better on a, on a site. And part of that, as, as we're doing it, we're consistently, you know, again, cost is driven by square footage for the most part, and, and so we're consistently trying to keep the square footage down to, to make the cost as economical as possible. So once we, we've kind of taken that and we've got a, a more of a schematic design, is what we've called, we usually just have a, we have a floor plan, we might have kind of a massing of, of the building, we'll, we'll put it on the site to kind of show a site plan, and we'll take these images and, and work with you guys, and, and that's when we really kind of start the bond promotion aspect of, of the, of the project, and we work with you on that. Typically, on, on something like that, we would...
Oh.
Page seventeen, sorry, I'm just kind of going...
Page what, I'm sorry, what page?
Page seventeen.
Okay, seventeen, yeah.
And I, and I, bond promotion is really, it's your opportunity to educate your citizens on, on why this is needed and what your plan is. And, you know, that goes from, you know, one thing, I, I know you guys are pretty sure you don't need your, you're sure your current jail is not meeting your needs and it can't be updated to meet your needs, you know, but your, your citizenry might not know that, and so, you know, even as simple as, you know, us doing a quick cursory review of your existing facilities and then being able to bring that information to, to public meetings where we're meeting with, with people who are, you know, who are eventually going to have to pay for this with tax dollars, until they understand why this is needed and what, why you guys are pursuing, proceeding, proceeding down this path. That's, that's a major portion of our work is, is to come out here and, and help you guys do that, and we usually are working with you, we're also typically working, I don't know if you guys have met with a fiscal agent to help you...
No, not yet, we have not.
Not yet, but we're typically meeting, you know, we're working with them to help, and they'll help with that bond promotion as well, to help people understand the tax implication, right, of what you're doing.
So let me interject, there's a quick question here, from using this chart, is there a standard timeframe that you found in this process from when we decide to begin the study to when we're bonding? How, how long typically does that period take?
Yeah, I think kind of flip ahead a couple of pages to page twenty, we did kind of include a sample schedule.
Oh, okay.
And, no, no worries, that's, and it's, and this is kind of a good time to talk about it, is, you know, we kind of broke it down into, you know, you really have three big phases here, you know, the first phase is that study, that initial, let's find out what we need, and that's kind of dilated to what we think the public's going to support, and then you have that funding and promotion phase, which is, you know, let's get the public's, you know, get this information out to the public, get some feedback, we haven't completely said this is what we're doing, so if we're getting some information back from the public and we need to address it, if we can change our message or, or adjust some things to meet the public's needs, we have that opportunity to do that, and then after, after the successful bond issue, then you get into that kind of standard long design process. So that initial study portion probably takes about kind of a thirteen week time period. Some of that depends on, you know, the more options that you analyze or the more, you know, the more information that we need to gather, sometimes how long it takes that information to be gathered, you know, that, that time period can stretch or expand a little bit, and then, and then you're talking, you know, it's, once we kind of have that settled down, concept, plan, information that we'd like to, you know, budget and information we'd like to come out to the public with, about a ten to twelve week period to really do that public information and bonding campaign, you know, maybe it's a, a vote yes campaign, or maybe it's a get out and vote campaign, some sort of communication that, you know, starts to get them out there.
Okay, great, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, no worries.
No worries, that's, I, okay. So, you know, from there, so like Jamie said, from, from the funding and bonding, you know, then we get a, hopefully we're getting a, a path bond issue, and then we're, we're starting right into our schematic design presentation. Typically, we've already kind of, we've got a, kind of a head start on with the initial plan layout, hopefully we're just taking that and, and moving right, right forward, and, and, you know, schematic design is really just what's this building going to kind of look like, what's, you know, what's the floor plan, what's the elevations, what's, you know, all that. And then from there, we, we do, we have a phase we call design development, which is really just taking that, that, those plans and developing further, start laying out our electrical and mechanical systems, getting all that kind of figured out, we'll, we'll start interior finishes and all that, and then hopefully, once we have that kind of completed, that's, you know, then we're into construction documents, creating a set of documents that the contractor can build from. And that's what you're seeing there in that, in that green there on page twenty, that's kind of when that's all happening.
And all along that process, as we're developing, you know, after funding has been set, we've determined a budget, we've determined the value of what this project is going to be, each one of those stages that we go through, we're adding more information, we're adding more detail, and we're evaluating the cost of that project along the entire way, we're continuously having either an independent cost estimator or a construction manager as agent, you, you know, we're working closely with that cost professional to determine that this project isn't growing or changing over the size of that design phase, so that we were continuously checking it back to that bond budget amount.
Because at the end of the day, our, our responsibility to you is, once we've set that bond amount and that bond is hit, is set, that's the, that's the budget we have to stick to.
Sure.
It doesn't do us any good to, and it doesn't, you know, it doesn't do you, it doesn't do you any good to grow from that budget, that budget is the budget, and so we work towards that budget.
So then I think, yeah, Matt was going to talk a little bit about, kind of, we did this process at, most recently, Thurston County in Nebraska, and we really walked through kind of all of those stages, and he can talk a little bit about what that project is.
That facility was, it's a little smaller than I think what you guys...
Page twenty one has just a couple of pictures of it, there's more pictures on our website too.
It's a little smaller than I think what you guys are, are looking at here, but it, it is, it is designed to expand, it's a thirty four bed facility currently, but it's designed to be able to accommodate fifty beds in the future. And part of that design process was to, there's, there's areas of the building, such as the kitchen, dining areas, that are actually sized for the fifty bed, they're designed to, for a fifty bed facility, but right now, they're only serving the thirty four.
Thirty five, thirty four.
Thirty four, and we basically, we, we, we have an outdoor housing, or outdoor rec area that is to be converted into a housing unit that will house sixteen inmates, like medium security.
It was, I'm not very good at quick calculation, so your, your square footage cost on that project was running what?
It was right around three hundred, I thought, square footage.
Right, yeah, right around three hundred, yeah.
So that, that's...
And those are twenty, keep in mind, those are twenty seventeen dollars.
Yeah, right, which is different, but, but that cost estimate is, actually, the building material, does that take into account any of the architectural fees or...
That, that cost is, is building by itself.
Yep, just the construction part.
And you'll know, I mean, three hundred dollars, I know, you know, some people kind of go three hundred dollars, that's a lot of money, but unfortunately, jails, the way that they're built, or there's, it's not because they're, we're putting opulent materials or whatever, it's, it's the fact that we're building CMU walls, we're having to ground those CMU walls, we're, we're having to put rebar in those CMU walls.
Sure.
A lot of the cost is associated with, with the jail portion of the building.
Just the construction type, and then there's jail...
That facility is, is a jail, a police and a E nine one one.
Center.
Center, a small E nine one one, really, it's, they just have a kind of dispatcher, not a, not a major kind of...
E O C.
Yeah, E O C, but it, it's just a, they have a dispatcher for, for the county, and then the sheriff's office is located in that.
So is this, is this the last jail that you've built, a county jail at this point?
It's the last full jail, yes.
Full jail, okay.
I mean, we've done some, we've done, we're actually working on, well, it's not a jail against currently, but it's, it's, we're working on, like Mike said, we're working on jail right now, we're adding the rest of the courts and everything else.
Okay. I didn't catch that, when was that jail built?
Uh, twenty seventeen.
And we, you know, that's the la, that was a bond project, Matt did walk them through kind of that pool, like he talked about, site selection was a big deal in Thurston, we had multiple communities that wanted to have the jail within their community, like Matt said, for the job opportunities, economic growth, so we had to do a real kind of public process of showing why we selected the site, where it went, where it was, and so we kind of gave, we definitely gave the sheriff's department the information to, you know, get out to the public on why they made the decision, and even though this was the last And even though this was the last kind of, you know, we have continuously done jail work since two thousand and seven. We have had ongoing, continuous projects, kind of the next ones forward, like Douglas County is, we have continuous ongoing projects for Douglas County in their jail facility. We've done a major renovation that's been phased over the last three years. So some of our jail work doesn't always result, kind of come out of that full bond process. But we're continuously working with both state and Nebraska, Douglas County, South Dakota County, on continual updates to their facilities that maybe don't always come from a bond process.
Okay, okay.
And then the last, the last image, or the last project here we have is the Douglas County Emergency Communication. This is Douglas County E nine-one line site.
That's on page twenty-three.
And that's on page twenty-three. And what we did here is, this is a facility that we renovated. It's a building that is extremely old building from nineteen twenty-nine that we had been various uses throughout here, including a retirement home. And it had been actually abandoned for twenty years. And we rehabbed the building. It's out in Hillcorn, or just inside, it's like a hundred and forty...
Hundred and forty-fourth in Maple.
Maple in Omaha.
Okay.
And completely renovated the building, brought it up to, you know, kind of, and really did a big rehab job on this. And it's a state-of-the-art facility for the...
What was the cost of that? It was about fourteen million.
It was a fourteen million dollar project.
That's a pretty big...
But that's a, keep in mind, that's an E nine-one-one, a lot, you know, E nine-one-one can really, especially on something of that complexity and that size, you can really, and you can see there, we've got entire walls that are video walls. And you're going to, the money, a lot of the money is in the A V and electronics.
And it did include an entire office for the treasurer's department, so Douglas County Treasurer for vehicle licensing. And so it, they, that was more than just E nine-one-one cost. But, and they were, I think that was the third phase we've done in that building. We've been continuously updating parts of that building, moving other areas. We've moved K nine and SWAT into portions of that building. We've moved Douglas County, a crime lab in a previous phase in that building. And this was just the most current with E nine-one-one, county treasurer.
Okay. Pretty impressive.
The next two projects are some, are just a couple more jails that we've done, we've completed within the last twenty years. You know, Saunders County Law, unfortunately, is probably a little bit bigger than what you guys are just looking at. But this is, and this is again, a full service facility, it's a court, it's thirty-nine-one-one, it's a jail. And it's, you know, the big thing on that is, we did get that one to pass with a seventy percent passage affirmation. You know, again, the cost on that, you're seeing thirteen million dollars, but that's in two thousand and eight.
Right.
And then the last one here is Platte County in Columbus, Nebraska, again, a full-service jail. You know, the highlight on this one is we did do some major investment in energy efficiency. We have a diesel fuel system on that facility. And they decided to go that route. And that's certainly something, if that's what the county wants to look at, we can certainly look at those options and show you the life cycle costs and help you understand if there's benefits to that. And then, again, the last one here is Cass County Law and Police Center, which is a facility that I think, you know, we're highlighting. Because again, it's a full service facility with courts and E nine-one-one center.
So prior to the construction of that jail, was that green space or was that another building?
I believe that was...
At Cass County.
Renovated. And then there is... Cass County, we renovated the existing courthouse adjacent. And it's pictured to the right. And then, yes, this was, this was like a parking lot.
Oh, okay.
There were a couple of houses that were removed to create the corrections center.
Okay, thank you.
So I think Michael kind of talked right into some construction delivery methods. I know that you guys have heard from both, you know, somebody that, you know, information about the construction manager's agent process. We have done several county facilities, state facilities, as a traditional design bid build method. We work in both operations. We kind of fit into a little bit different into both. And we, you know, we definitely feel comfortable with both and as kind of go through, you know, a little information. And this is kind of where really, if you guys have some major questions on the process or what our role is for some different things, feel free to chime in and ask.
We are real close to being done. We have a couple of pages here in the law wrap-up.
Oh, you're fine, huh?
No, no, we wanted to, we wanted to kind of get through this and we can leave you with the information. Both, we thought maybe you'd have some questions, so we can target specific things to you. But construction delivery methods, as Jamie indicated, there's multiple ways of doing this. Traditional, traditional construction is the design bid build method. And there are, you know, there are places for that and there are places for construction manager projects. Typically, many of our corrections projects have been just design bid build. The construction manager at risk or the construction manager's advisor have been around, but they haven't been utilized by public entities until recent, more recent years. And we list some advantages and challenges to each of these. The thing with the design bid build is there's the architect, and we work for the owner, and the contractor works for the owner. We communicate directly with the contractor. You hold a contract with both. Then there's the subcontractors and material suppliers that hold a contract with the contractor. With the construction manager as agent, it's a little bit different. And there are multiple variations of that. There may be a construction manager as agent where he serves more of a, almost like a general contractor function. Or there are truly just an advisory function where there is a general contractor that is, is holding a contract with the owner and he holds all the subs. But in this diagram, what we've shown is the general, is the construction manager is functioning very much as a general, where he's responsible for the schedule, he's responsible for the budget. But ultimately, the cost is competitively bid with subcontractors, very similar to the way it is in design bid build. But instead of the construction with the contractor holding all of those subs, it's the owner who holds all of those subcontractors. The construction manager is, basically what they do is advise you and they coordinate that effort. So the information and the billing is channeling through them, but ultimately the contractor holds. We recommend a construction manager based project on, usually on a multi-phase project, a highly complex project, something where it's time, a messy renovation project, or something that's very time critical, a fast track project or something that's very time critical, so that we, so that we, in design bid build, there is a design process and then there's a four or five week bid period process and there's contracting, kind of vetting of those bids and due diligence period, and then you award the contractor a contract. So it's stretched out a little bit. In the construction manager project, you bring them on. Maybe it's an interview process, just like we do with architects, to select the construction manager. But you bring them on early on and they're working together with us. Instead of us holding a consultant agreement with an independent cost consultant, we're referring to the construction manager for that, for that portion of the work. We're working together with them. We kind of step up our involvement within that process. But we're really working with the construction manager on our costs. They're also involved in the design process on buildability of the building. If there are any complexities that they see with regard to phasing, or if there's any complexities they see with regard to the timing of the construction, they're on board early on to kind of answer those questions and steer the project. So again, there are advantages, disadvantages, there's, you know, there's quite a quarter stories with both processes. And, but there are ways around them. I know that with design bid build, one of the hits it takes is you're stuck with both the little bit. But you're also looking at a multimillion dollar project, so only certain contractors can be able to bond for that. So you're dealing with a different animal than if you were building a very small project.
All right, awesome. So cost control methods was the next phase and then the fee estimate. And I think probably, you know, whoever we hire, we're going to put a great amount of trust in helping guide us through controlling costs, because none of us frankly have the expertise to do that. So if we could, let's jump to the fee schedule and kind of explain how that looks. I don't know, Mark, if you're going to walk us through that or...
Well, what we're showing here on this fee schedule, and this is for the phase one study, we've broken this out. Phase one study, we show a fee there. And that is a lot of the autonomy of Mark Martin's work. He is really working, doing the bulk of that, the bulk of that work. That's where he gets paid and we're assisting, assisting him coming up with conceptual plans that reflect what he's showing with you, but a lot of that is Mark's work. The funding and promotion side of that is a much lesser fee. The issue there is, you know, we're architects. We want, we want to work with phase three. And we want to, we want to put this together as a, as a construction project that ultimately serves with me. And so, so our phase two, we dial that fee down, cover some of our expenses, but really, really, that's kind of our skin in the game is to get that bond passed.
And that phase two would be your, your public information meeting. You know, we'd come with, you know, likely your fiscal agents, wherever you're doing, you know, getting some of your costing information and help, you know, walk through the plan and explain our study process to the public. And if we need to tweak plans or provide drawing or diagrams to help explain the process along the way, that's kind of what happens for that public interaction phase is the phase two.
Good.
Now, the phase one says it's a lump sum of thirty thousand. And so is there any contingency potentially on that? Like, can that change regarding the work or is that automatically thirty thousand?
There, it's, that's the fee for performing this study. And putting together some conceptual design fees. And there's probably not, there's probably more potential for additional things that would, I guess we would say, would be unusual for us to be asked to do during the, during the phase two. If for some reason, what ordinarily, I mean, really, on county bond issues, school bond issues, the work that we typically perform, if we want to do some sort of an internet survey and we need to hire a public relations consultant, that'd be kind of something that would be different than ordinary. You're probably on all other examples?
Mailing, you know, if you wanted to do a direct mailing and you needed somebody to, you know, print and post it and get all that out or go around to the yard sign. You know, a lot of that stuff can be done through community groups and kind of citizen involvement. But if you wanted somebody, you know, we will provide the information to go on there, the content we ask if you want to show people, the reasoning why, that some of that may be kind of the more public outreach, et cetera. And it's easy, you know, we can do a helpful Facebook page or an Instagram live or something that if you guys do a walk through the jail and show people the needs, but then there might be a bigger effort that you may need to hire somebody that kind of runs that vote yes or get out and vote campaign. That happens more in phase two, but phase one is the majority of, you know, that's going to be the bulk of the study portion of it.
So you give advice on all that, not really do it. You advise us, give us information.
Somebody, we have somebody do that. You're just giving us your expertise on that. And that costs five thousand dollars for the advice, basically, and the information. It's more than advice. It might, you know, we'll generate, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll design a campaign.
Sure.
We'll do it. We'll design it.
We get paid to print it then.
But it's, you might have some printing costs.
So I guess my questions are, any fees outside of like the thirty thousand and the five thousand communicated beforehand? So it's not like at the end you get a huge surprise, like...
That's not the way we...
No, no. You wouldn't get a surprise. You got a surprise, we wouldn't be unfazed of it.
I'm sorry, what?
I said, if you got a surprise from us, you wouldn't have us befaced. And that's not, there's not going to be, there's nothing like that. I suppose if you, if we investigate four sites and then all of a sudden there's five buildings that you want us to do a complete study of, that'd be unusual. I suppose that'd be, you know, we'd work together, we go, this is a little different scope, and we both understand that. We're not, if we're asked to do something well beyond, then that would be...
But fifteen thousand of that initial thirty thousand goes toward the design and construction.
Right. Yeah. When your study is done, the bond passes and you roll into phase three and it becomes a design and construction project, then we return some of that, some of that fee. And really, it's, fee is all about effort and there's not a lot of magic to it. One of the things Matt said earlier is, is some of our work is done with that conceptual planning. So when we get into schematic design, design development, we're not starting from nothing. We're starting from a conceptual plan. So you've already paid us to do that work. So, I guess in our mind, we can, we can return or basically credit some of that effort towards the phase three work.
Sure, okay.
And then, and then the, there's a percentage, general kind of rough fee schedule there. As the project ratchets up in size, there's some efficiencies to what we do. And those numbers can, those percentages can dial down. Now, one of the things, back, back a couple pages on the cost control, the needs assessment. And we talked about this earlier, the needs assessment, really, that's really where your overall budget is really established. It's from the needs. So once that needs assessment is done, we can apply basically square footage costs to that work and say, okay, listen, this is, this is, your needs exceed the budget that is going to be palatable as a bond here. And so we're going to prioritize that. And we're going to knock out the first three priorities, but then these things are going to need to wait. Or, you know, we'll work back and forth on that to make sure that what we ultimately design and what we go for, go for bond for is matching all your highest needs. But it may or may not cover all, but the needs assessment and prioritization is where it sets the number. And once that number is set, that's what sets our fee, it sets the construction manager fee, all of our engineers' fees. And those won't change unless the scope changes beyond what was originally established.
And these fees are kind of established based on, you know, us working with, you know, our, you know, us coordinating and providing that upfront study portion. I do know that there's other entities, I know there's, you know, some construction managers out there that run the study portion of that. I do know that there's other entities, I know there's, you know, construction managers out there that run the study portion of that. And what we do is we fit in with them too. We, if you have somebody else that's providing that initial upfront study and from a programmatic planning standpoint, we can partner with them to provide the content plan. You know, we can see their architecture portion and then that initial Phase One study for us, you know, that number can come down significantly because then we're just providing the architecture portion partnered together with the CMA that you have interviewed and chosen, or construction manager, agent that you've partnered and chosen. So that being good, you know, definitely a good study question. But we can, you know, conceptualize and work directly with the construction manager, agent, if they're, if you choose for somebody else to provide the study. But like I said, we really, we do like the fact that our study is performed by somebody who is not tied to architecture or construction aspect, he's really independent of those.
Maybe functions, the way we work with him, he really functions. And ultimately, as far as we're concerned, you can have it. We just need to know who to work for. And we need, we trust Mark and we know who the effort that he puts forth and we can rely on those numbers. And that's why we select him oftentimes for projects. But he's listed here as a part of our team. But we do, really do try to distance ourselves because it has to be independent. Just like when we hire, who wouldn't have a construction manager on the project? Or if we don't have a construction manager on the project, we'd hire an independent cost estimate. So we can do cost estimates. But if you get somebody that's independent, that doesn't, that's a work for an architect, that works for a general contractor doing your cost estimates, they're going to, they're going to know what the current local trends and costs are. They're going to know who's busy and who's going to, you know, give you their kind of I'm too busy number. You know, they're going to know all of those things in real time and we'll work with them and get very accurate costs.
Two questions there. One, what does that generally cost for this independent cost? What's a general idea, a percentage, or what do they normally want, do you know?
For the independent cost estimator?
Those are probably somewhere, depending on the complexity of the project and if you want. And oftentimes, we want a schematic design estimate, we want a design development estimate, we want a two-construction document estimate. So as we're progressing, we're getting cost estimates based on progress of the drawings and we adjust if necessary and keep moving forward and then keep adjusting the cost. So, you know, that might be six to ten thousand dollars, I suppose, all in for that.
The thing to note about that though is typically that's coming out of, we're paying that out of our fee. We don't pass that.
Oh, okay.
Six to ten thousand dollars, that's part of our.
That's something that if we didn't have those guys, it would be our team.
That's when you're looking in that Phase Three, when you're talking about architects that are like in that seven to eight, you know, seven and, you know, to eight percent range or six to seven and a half percent range. Out of that fee comes our independent cost estimator, comes our engineer consultant, comes our civil engineer, comes our structural engineer. That's not just what comes to us as the architect, that's our team of architecture engineering cost estimating.
So it's safe to assume that in that five to seven and a half million dollar range, the closer to five million that the project cost is, then you're paying the higher percentage, is that how that works?
Yes or no, the higher, the higher the construction cost, the more efficiencies there are, just in general terms. What really drives this as much as that is the complexity of the project. Are we having, is this a jail project or is there courts with it? Or is there public safety with it? Do we have a bunch of communications to deal with? What's the site? Civil engineer costs could range greatly.
I get it. Another thing is on the plans, if we do all this and you make a plan, it's the done, finished plan, we buy, we're building the jail. Do we own those plans?
Yes.
We can do it for what we want?
We can do, yes. There, you know, there's some, there's some legal technicalities to who owns them and has copyrights and all that business, but.
We give you a set of plans at the end, you're going to have a role that's going to be in your.
Same jail by the same plans, could they do that because we own them, they could build off those plans?
Could they?
Yeah, another county wants to build the exact same.
Yes.
And we would own those plans, we pay the money, they haven't drawn them, done.
Yes, there's some liabilities that kind of follow. And of course, in our agreement, it would basically say, we have the ability. We can't give you all the rights to all of that stuff because then legally, if we wanted to use a window detail, you know, on another project or on a hundred other projects, we could legally, we could, you know. You have legal or.
If you're paying three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for an architect and design plan, you still have rights that we don't have.
Well, it's going to be, you know, that, we have adapted that plan. I mean, there's always efficiencies in layout for jails. This, you know, this day room is more efficient with this layout, but that is adapted to your site. So it's never going, we're never going to take this exact set of plans and pick up that building and drop it on somebody's site and charge them three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Because their site's going to be totally different, their access, their utilities, kind of everything that goes around with it. So we might, they might come and say, we love Page County Jail, we walked through it, you guys did a great job, build us that. And so what we're going to say is, okay, let's look at Page County and how they operate and how do you operate? And what they're going to find is, no, they're actually, they do operate a little different. And they, and these guys have kind of gone through that before. We've had other jails call us and, yeah, we've had other jails, you know, other entities call us and say, you know, hey, I've seen that jail, you know, can we get that and what are the efficiencies in that? And Mike and Matt can talk about kind of what they've walked them through that process with.
Really, the short answer is you own the law. I mean, really, you own the law.
If we came with a set of drawings we liked from another jail and it didn't require much changes, would that, I mean, because these plans are very expensive, I mean, very, three hundred, three, four hundred thousand, could we not save a lot there if we just found, like, if I was going to build a house, I might find a house I liked a lot, walk through it, basically copy their plans.
Right.
And correction facilities are, can be very similar with the jail part. I mean, it's not, it's where they hold houses and lives.
We have a good example of that is this project that we have in Washington State. Right. We're doing a court submission to. It was an adult juvenile jail.
Hey, Mike, can you just talk up a little bit?
It was an adult juvenile corrections facility that we did in another community in Washington. They, this group toured that facility really well and called us up. I got a phone call one day out of the blue from these folks and they said, hey, how much for, would we buy a set of plans? Well, it doesn't really work that way, let's talk about it. And so we went out there and talked with them and ultimately was determined, oh, you know, yeah, walking through, everything looks good, but our whole is different. We have a different population, our site is different. You know, we're in a different, they were in a different plan. We're on, one is northeast Washington and one is central south Washington. It's just different, it was done, one was done four years ago in the energy code. All the engineering changed. It's, it is, to come up with a concept plan for a jail, floor plan, is that's the, as complex as it is, that's the easy part. The difficulty is hitting all the energy code issues, hitting all the life safety issues and making it fit the way you operate in your population.
We just have several jails within a hundred mile area or less, but new jails, a bunch of them. And there might be one that fits our needs, we're pretty similar.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm just trying to find a way to streamline that.
We, our fee is going to reflect our, if our effort goes down for whatever reason, our fee is going to go down. And that's something we just have to work back, we just have to work that out together. But well, we want to go to this, we want to tour this jail with you, we want to show you this, they will give you the floor plan you could use. That's a method and we have to work with that. Now, our engineers are going to go, well, I still got to go through all the structural calculations, we still got to go through all the energy calculations. Things change over time and it's just different here than it might be a hundred miles from here. But there would definitely be some effort that maybe we wouldn't have to go through. We could just work out some sort of additional effort.
I would offer this question to these two gentlemen. Is there a jail you walked through that you think, man, this is what I want, exactly what I want?
Not yet. Not exactly what would fit the needs of Page County, not what we want. So what would fit the needs of Page County? Like every county goes down, every county, they're all out different aspects of what they did is the same person or group. But go, you look at ours and you think, okay, we can see what maybe isn't working great for them or what wouldn't work in our setting. And that's something that we need to think about also. But that's what I was wondering about the architectural plans is, okay, so does the county then own those plans outright? So let's say down the road that the county wants to build a jail. They come over, they tour ours, they say this is what we want. We buy those plans from the county. But if they still have the guy, right, they're going to want money, is what I'm saying.
Well, and what I'm going to say, commit to that, and again, I'm not an architect and these guys can tell me legally if I say anything wrong, but, I mean, ultimately, they can buy you that set of plans, but it's not going to do them any good because they're going to need, they're going to need to have an architect stamp and seal those plans. They're going to have to have an engineer stamp and seal those plans. And they're going to go to that and much like we do. I mean, that's how we get repeat business, is somebody sees a jail and if somebody sees a different project that we do, they come to us and we ask them those questions. We said, well, does that really function for you? And what we hear is the same thing of what you said, well, I like it, but really this is function's a little different and this function's a little different. And if we're going to spend all this taxpayer money, you know, we're going to take all those aspects of what we've done at different jails and say, you know, hearing how you function, we did that, we solved that problem, we used this solution to do that. So we'll take this component of that jail and put it on there. You know, we're not starting it from scratch every single time. We're taking this component and we're putting all of these together to fit your exact needs. And ultimately, it's designed for you.
That's an example of that, it's something that fits the needs of the county. They give staff the amazing, and that works. And then thirty, forty years from now, it should still work, which had a risk of all that's in the future, it wasn't what it was not. Looking at other jails, we see things in the area that the top of the sheriffs or jail managers are here staying around. You know, we've obviously worked and did. And now they're there. It's something we like to not make those mistakes. I mean, obviously, times change, standards change, different things that we have to deal with change. But we're trying to look to the future and meet the current needs. Because we don't know what's going to happen, I mean. We could have a population boom and go from a need assessment of a thirty-five bed facility to now a seventy-five bed facility. Where can we expand it and adjust all that?
And I think even, you know, we kind of looked at that. And even if you said, we'll never expand this jail, come this county's been at this exact size for the last fifty years, we're never going to expand it, we will still in that planning process say, well, what if? You know, that's what if? You don't know, we don't have to press the ball, we don't have to press the ball. So let's just say, you know, what is your opportunity to expand? We don't have to do it now, you know, maybe we won't do as much planning and sizing of certain things because we really don't think it's going to go that way. But that's not landlocked, you, let's not paint you into this corner. So if you have, you know, the next great industry boom here and you bring in a bunch of jobs and you have your demographics change, we have thought through that, we have, you know, cycled out thirty, fifty.
The other thing to keep in mind with a jail is it's not just about getting the fifty beds and that's how you need fifty beds. It's about having the right mix and making sure, because I'm sure you're running into that now where you probably have, you might have enough beds, but you don't have the right kind of bed. You got to, and you can't put, you can't put this prisoner with that prisoner because they're a woman or they have mental health needs or whatever, a myriad of reasons why you can't put this prisoner there. And I have nowhere to put them, so I got to, even though I have a free bed, I got to send them somewhere else. And that's what happens. And that's why, to me, that's why you really, you really do have to do the assessment. And that's really the value that we're bringing to you, is our ability to help them get what they need.
And then designing it with some flexibility in mind, where if you have, you know, maybe this day room can be, you have a population of certain needs that has expanded, well, we can easily block those and let's put the, you know, this classification in this area. And we've thought about that and what, you know, how it's easy for us to kind of adjust that, to move them around a little bit as needed to kind of meet those, you know, current needs and then, you know, planning for future growth.
And I don't want to beat this to anyone, but I want to also leave it sit. The ownership of the drawings really to us, it's a little bit negligible. What we don't want to do is not be able to continue to do corrections work because someone holds the keys to our ability to do that. And at the same time, you know, we're not going to, we're not going to prevent you from doing something to your bill with adjusting the drawings that you paid for. Or even if you want to give those to someone, we're not, like, we're going to go to county and pursue a fee. It's not, it doesn't work that way. We would give you, you know, you'd have the drawings, you'd have electronic version of that and do with it what you want. But the caveat is, whatever's done with those beyond our involvement, we can't maintain liability for it, professional liability for it, it's just natural. And so that's really what we want.
If we had a set of drawings that you drew and we got them from another county and we said, we just want to change these, your advice on this, just to change this a little bit, it wouldn't be near as much then, right? If the plans were there, if not much work were done to change them, the fee would come down because the plans have already basically been drawn. If it wasn't much.
There would be, there would be, I just know that it's complex.
Yeah.
There's complexities in the back room with regard to energy and.
My mind on a site, we're going to go very, my opinion would be going to very easy to build area with no restrictions, with nothing on the back from expanding or any, I mean, very simple site. Not pigeon them somewhere would it be?
We would certainly work with you on that.
Which would make plans easier to uniform and a very, very generic site.
Well, do you have any questions, Alan? I think you've answered my questions. Did you guys have any other questions or concerns? I am curious, I think I'm going to, after this meeting, go out on eBay and see how many jail plans there are. I'm guessing there's not an abundance of them.
I think if somebody has created the perfect plan and can sell it to everybody for all their needs, first of all, I hope we would come up with that and sell it to every single sheriff out there. But I think it would also, it would be prevalent, I think, if everybody found that one right plan that everyone could buy. I sure would love to have it. That's what I'm saying, a unicorn out there.
Well, each county, as you've experienced when you've gone places and toured, they all think they're, they all think they're building exactly what they need at the time that they're building it and source some future. But when you go, not quite exactly what would work for us. And that's just, that's really common and it's very common. It would be unusual to have a cookie cutter that really you could just kind of slap down. So the issue is never, it's never an issue, this copyright thing is just never really an issue. Like, it is for a house, that's another one. Because you could, you know, you can block those down and it's just different. So I guess we don't have, we don't have a good answer for that, but it's a non-issue. And there's a lot of information here that we didn't cover and we didn't, we didn't want to take up your time with it, but Dave is going to leave a PDF of that if you want.
Yeah.
For some reason, you need it.
A lot of this information is on your website.
On our website, there's more pictures of all those projects on our website. We can, you know, any additional information you want with any of those, you know, we're around. If you think of questions after the fact, like, you know, that's what we like to do is get a call with questions. We didn't think about this, like, don't, you know, don't think we, we don't want to leave you, you know, we could talk about this for hours. Because that's what we do, we get into the study phase and talk about it for weeks and weeks and weeks. But we, you know, we just want to make, let you guys know that we are, you know, we're a source of information. We're here to answer your questions. If you even have a question about a process that you think is a little different than our, you know. If you even have a question about a process that you think is a little different than our, you know, what we presented, let us know. Because we'd love to talk to you about it.
Okay. Oh, thanks, Mike. All right, well, Mike, Matt. And it's Mike, I had you as Mark, I'm sorry, Mike. I call you Mark on the phone. All right, well, thank you for making the trip out and all the great information, appreciate it. Um, we, we have a lot of discussion yet ahead of us. Uh, I'm not sure we're on a timeframe, we've heard from three of you now. And, um, I think we have more questions that have come up as a result of that, so.
Well, and certainly there's other questions to reach out to.
Okay.
This is a, this is a, this is a big process and a big decision. And, uh, you know, this is communication, and starting communication now isn't, isn't, uh, isn't a big deal if we're gonna continue to do it, or you're gonna continue to do it with whoever, whoever you want.
Sure. Awesome.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Hi, guys.
All right, do we have some claims to look at?
Thanks, very much.
I'm not sure if that presentation's on there. If it doesn't, let me know and I can email them.
Okay, great, thank you, Jamie. Okay, that's it. Look at claims here. Pardon me?
Yep.
One more time on minutes. Oh, yes, yep. Thank you.
Good dream, Bean.
Bean Bean was, uh, wanted to sell out of. Oh, he's worked with parts, he died after he fell in the city.
Yeah, okay.
Um, I couldn't trip him and someone, like, a big LeBunson.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. He worked for the county.
For a number of years.
Yeah, I don't know how long Jane worked for the county.
You've got copy.
Yeah, I'm in it, yeah. We haven't had public comment yet.
No, we haven't heard public comment yet. So in fact, uh, while we finish up our claims, looking at those, is there any public comment?
I've actually got a comment statement that's been entered as far as I was on the agenda. Would like to do.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, go, go for it.
Okay, um, I'd like to read it, I've got questions I'd like to have answered if I could. Um, purposefully saying, or leaving a statement as a question. Uh, my fellow supervisor, auditor, well, how's him, the page guy says that I do not, do not mean to repeat myself and I'm elected by all Page County citizens as a representative. I continue to work with persistent determination to do the best representation of my constituents and all the Page County. I have a few questions I would like to have answered too. This might be directed to Melissa or Chuck or anyone complete telling of my constituents, who creates the agenda? Who creates that?
It's a cumulative effort. People call in, wanna be on the agenda, the clearinghouse is the auditor's office.
My next question is, yeah, who has permission to add items to the agenda? Could be the board. More chair has the, the power to.
Yeah.
And we have, I do on and off the agenda.
And we, we asked, we have the agenda items by noon on Friday, unless it's an emergency. Uh, we asked out of our elected, you know, somebody calls in, say, hey, I wanna be on the agenda. Uh, they call Monday morning, well, the agenda is released on Monday's week.
Right.
We're gonna have a, a cutoff at noon on Friday.
Well, I have, I mean, I'm a elected supervisor, I would feel any, any business I wanna discuss in the meeting, I would, cannot imagine. I've never been addressed, but you could say why I couldn't.
Have you had something that you've asked to be on the agenda?
Yeah, a couple times today, I, I asked to be on the agenda Friday at noon, to discuss the resolutions and, and things I did not feel the way I thought they should. And I was not permitted to be on the agenda, and I didn't know how I'm supposed to.
Your email came afternoon, and I actually emailed you back and told you that, based on what you were requesting, I had, because you and I spoke about that prior, that you had voted on the resolution.
I have other information, I'll put, interesting information to discuss about the meeting, it's been fine. But if I have something I'd like to discuss in the meeting, I'm sure I'd think I could get in the meeting and discuss it for five or ten minutes. I also know that in the email thread, you sent me the concern, another concern, uh, on January thirtieth, which is a Saturday afternoon, you asked this, this resident, can I put you on the agenda Tuesday? And that was at three thirty, and then again at five eleven, and said, just let me know no later than tomorrow, which would be Sunday, so we can add it to the agenda before it gets published.
So what was, what was the issue? Because if it was an emergency.
That was the road, that was about the Stanton Road, the, the thread you got.
Yes, and we had some, uh, we had some deep concerns about liability, and I considered that more of an emergency situation.
So on Friday at twelve thirty or whatever day, during business hours on Friday, if I call in with a, not complicated, just would like to ask a question on, on the record in the agenda.
You didn't call on Friday.
Or I called and talked to the office and I emailed Friday, and this is it. My emails on Friday, I talked to Christie. I didn't talk to you, you were at the office.
I left at first thirty, so.
Wow, I can go back and through this, and I did. And also an email Friday, and I emailed Christie also. But I would, I would like to know, I just, to better do my job, how, if I wanna put something on the agenda, if I say it Friday at eight o'clock in the morning, is it gonna be on there if you decide or who, how it's gonna work?
You asked, we'll put it on the agenda.
Well, that's what I thought.
I didn't, I didn't know you had an agenda item until now, before today, it did not get allowed. But if, I'm told you called after noon, unless it's emergent, and if it's a, if it's an emergent thing, then yes, we should put it on the agenda, I have no idea. So what, what, what did we get on the agenda?
I wanted to discuss these resolutions and how that happened, if I am over that a little bit, because I really finished a loop. I'll go ahead and go on here if that comes up.
Well, and Jacob, if I could just interrupt you real quick.
Yeah.
You did send it afternoon. I responded directly back to you and told you I reached out to the Department of Management because on Tuesday night, after you had voted yes and you wanted to vote nay, you had asked me to look into that, so I had. And the Department of Management at that point had advised me, they did not feel that that could be, that your vote could change at that point.
Right.
And so then I had heard even more from you from Tuesday to Friday, so I didn't do anything further with it. So then Friday, they would email me after twelve o'clock and said that I recalled the Department of Management to check with them. And they had told me then at that point I needed to check with the county attorney. So I did send you an email.
Yes, but.
I definitely told you, I was reaching out with the county attorney because they, the Department of Management had advised me at that point, it was under the county attorney's realm of expertise to know whether it should be placed on the agenda or not.
And with that.
And I reached out to him, he had tried to reach out to the AG's office, but he said with it being late Friday, he probably would come back on time for Monday's agenda. So he advised him to wait until next week to put it on the agenda then.
Well, I had more than that up about, which is gonna come up, which is part of it, I agree. But I had more than that, and I was a clerk to every county, I've been clerked. When the, when the trustee's asking me to put something on, I did it. And I get your discussion, but I still had other things, which I will get to here, I'll go on.
I definitely never could back to you after that to know, um, and I didn't get any further communication back from you regarding that you have other things on the agenda.
I didn't think I had to do that to say I would like to remain there, I didn't say I didn't want to. You gave me some information, but anyway, I'll go on, and this is addressed with what I wanted to talk about until just now. Since it wasn't on the agenda, it's going to be waiting another week, puts it out for me. Uh, on the topic of, uh, on another topic regarding the March ninth evening meeting where the agenda is voted public hearing by the, immediately following by discussing through budget resolution number sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and discussing approved fiscal year twenty-two budget, resolution sixteen restated the recommendation by the compensation board to give a four percent raise, number seventeen is the resolution for appropriation, and number eighteen is the resolution to adopt the budget and certify taxes. After the public, public hearing was closed, supervisor Armstrong immediately made one motion to approve all three resolutions. I seconded the motion in order to begin discussion. Again, these questions may be directed to Melissa or Chuck. Why were the resolutions not read into the records prior to the vote?
Yeah, it's a, I mean, if you wish to have them read, Jacob, ask to have them read.
I think it's a good idea. I'm learning as we go here, but I think that's a good idea. I just, why would I? Yeah, I should have, and I'm just, I didn't know there's a reason. Okay, and why were these three separate resolutions allowed to be considered under one motion rather than separate motion for each? That's our question, why is the?
It's up to you.
The board, they don't.
That would be where you'd say I'd like.
Separated.
Just like your outline at the beginning of that about approving the three resolutions with the budget.
Right, and then I would like to also know, if these resolutions were made pub, made available to the public, then where would they post the resolutions on the budget on the list that were been open that?
They're actually put in the minutes after they're finalized.
There's nowhere to see them before.
I mean, it's actually the meeting was absolutely correct during the meeting.
Okay. As a duly elected supervisor. Right. What? I believe they should be. As a duly elected supervisor, I was not provided with copies of these resolutions before, during, or after the meeting on March ninth. In fact, at this moment, I have not received copies of those documents except in unofficial minutes. After the motion was made, comments were exchanged that led everyone, including me, to believe these were budget amendments. Directing this to Melissa, Chuck or anyone, why were these highly pertinent documents not provided to me before the meeting or the vote?
Because she didn't ask for them.
I have, I need to ask the resolutions to be emailed to me.
I've never emailed.
Or you sent them a, or a doc?
I have not emailed up resolutions prior to meetings. I usually bring them in here, if somebody wants the resolution read, we read them. Uh, but yeah, if you want anything at any point, all you can do is ask.
Well, right now, I'm.
I can't do anything from you or not do anything, it's just, um, if, if you don't ask, I don't know that you don't know how it works or the procedures, so.
So, Chuck, you requested the resolutions before the meeting, is that how you did it?
I, I did not request, I asked, I mean, when I have a question about some of the agenda, I would give Melissa a call and say, hey, refresh my memory, what, what's in this resolution or whatever. If I have a question, I'll ask her to send it, but normally the conversation will satisfy my, my question.
Okay, uh, well, I think it'd be good practice, but seeing they were gonna vote on it with all that much money and sense of all this in some way, shape, or form. My vote without the opportunity to read or see the documents, uh, sent to me, as I was told in the discussion that they were amendments, you can go back and watch the video, that's what I asked, because I thought it was the same a few weeks ago, when we kind of had the same thing happen, it was amendment happened before we voted on the total budget. It was just, it confused me, and it's, we said, and it was said in the video, you can go back and watch it, amendment. And it was yay, however, if I had been able to read them, my vote would have definitely been nay. And to Melissa, why did you not immediately after the vote circulate these resolutions for signature to supervisors before the meeting was adjourned, whereby I was rendered unable to have further discussion? That would have been handy. Why did?
Well, once again, I'm trying to take minutes and do everything, that's something directly you can always ask for. Um, you know, I'm, I'm trying to do my best up here, Jacob, we had a ton of people up here, I was trying to take minutes, we had a lot of public comments. Um, once again, when I'm up here, I'm the clerk to the board, my job is to take the minutes. If you have questions or anything specific, you three as the supervisor, you need to make sure you handle those. Um, but, I mean, it's, it's your job to make sure you're informed on your decisions, not, not my job to make sure, sure you are. If you have questions directly, you can always ask me, I'm always willing to help. Um, Al and Chuck call me often with questions. Um, I, I think they could tell you, I always am willing to answer anything or send them any information. You just have to reach out and ask for it. I, I'm human too, um, I, I don't know what your, what, what specific interest you have. That night, it was very busy in here, and so I was trying to do best I could doing my job.
Uh, after, uh, okay, after the resolutions, Chuck grabbed the next agenda item, discussed approved FY twenty-two budget, and Armstrong immediately made a motion to approve, that will roll call though. Armstrong and Morris voted yay and I voted nay. I further clarified my nay vote was because of the four percent pay increase. On prior communication, I recommended Page County employees be, I have recognized Page employees as being diligent and hardworking, but in this unprecedented time of COVID nineteen, with tax returns, loss of jobs, and businesses such an increase and demand on taxes not appropriate. But the two one vote, the budget was approved. That's another question comes similarly, and I think we've done this in the past. Why was the budget summary, summary not read under record and not laying out, be made available to the people here that night? The summary, it's in the paper, the basic summary. I, in my years, I, I, I know I got it last year, I think, I'm pretty sure it's sitting out here, I came as a resident.
I don't remember the budget summaries being out, but maybe they had been. Have they typically been out, Melissa? The budget.
Why was the budget summary not the basic summary? And that's why I was trying to ask it before the meeting started, because I wanted to have that in front of me. Why was that not made available? I think that's a good idea, because that, you had them, or they weren't set out for people to grab.
We put it on the website, it was published in a different one.
Yeah, that's just a nice thing, I think, should be out.
I thought our presentation that night was very well informed, and we've had any more questions, we have time to ask for changes, so. I, I, yes.
I think that's another thing, I think, would be very good, I'm new here, I'm trying to catch on to all this, but I think that, that would be very, very important to do. My very short time on this board is the struggle to get documents in time, I'm a manager, for example. For example, the weekly agenda I get on Monday mornings at eight thirty when it's, when it's publicly posted. This all but ensures I can fully prepare for all the items to be discussed. Our code requires the meeting agenda to be posted for the public at least twenty-four hours before the meeting, and the auditor is careful to meet that deadline if only by a few minutes. However, if it would be, I, I, it would be advantageous for all supervisors, including myself, to have that agenda, even in preliminary. to have that agenda, even in preliminary form, as it is prepared ahead of the meeting, and I respectfully request the agenda items for the coming meeting as they are received by the auditor's office and added to preliminary agenda. I would like to have that as they come in, the same as I guess the chair would. I would like to at least see it, so I can prepare for what's coming.
You can sure try to do that. And also too, I mean, if you would rather just take care of the agenda, you can do that too. I mean, I do it as something I thought was trying to be nice, but I mean, if one of you would rather take care of the agenda and send it out, you also can too. So it's just something I, I mean, as a clerk, I've done since I've been here, but.
It's just to prepare for a meeting. A lot of times I look at these 30.
But you know, we're also busy in our office at the week. I mean, if you want to come in sometime in March, we handle elections, we handle plane.
I don't doubt your business, but.
And sometimes we get busy, and so, I mean, I can always try to send everything. We could actually try to just some hair forward, have everybody who needs or wants to be on the agenda to send it to the board of supervisors and auditor, so that you guys are aware. But like I said, sometimes, and we try to encourage everybody to do that just because there are times too, if people email me directly, but I mean, there's some times if I'm on Saturday and Sunday, I try to check my email, but if I don't always do that, there's some times on a Monday when I've got 200 emails. So I'm trying to go through as fast as I can while if something, like, and that's why two weeks, that's the 12 p.m. requirement on Friday, because in the past, people would get upset if they weren't put on. Well, they might have emailed me on a Saturday. Well, if I have to get up to the agenda by 8:30 and I've got 200 emails, my email works. Unfortunately, it starts Monday to Saturday, so there's sometimes it could be 8:45 before I see it, and then I'll be like, oh shoot, I missed this, you know? And true, just to get it in time and wise, like today, we have the jail presentation. Just so you understand a little bit more how it works, like with the jail presentation at 8:15, trying to get everything scheduled and known, especially when we assign times out to people on some of those like budget hearings and things like that, it's a little bit, like the reason we ask for the 12 p.m., is so we can get people in there and they get a time. But then too, for people coming from outside too, and communicate that to them too, so they know. Because we sure, I mean, we try not to put somebody on at 9:15 and then have them wait till 10:30 or so. Every once in a while, it does happen if something major goes wrong. But that's part of the reason we do it too, is that we have enough time to get the agenda out, try to give people the time they need, and also gauge too on there with the different things happening. It's never to disprove anybody or to not handle things right. It's just trying to make sure it's organized, and so when people get in here, it's not like we throw somebody on at 8:45, give them 10 minutes, throw somebody else on, and then, you know, everybody comes in here and a discussion that really takes an hour only has 10 minutes because we just scheduled. That's why we try to kind of look at things afterwards and make sure.
I'm going to, this is just practicality, if I was the chair, and I just was getting all this stuff and working on it, and then you guys then find out probably 30 Monday morning, you're like, whoa, I'm not ready for this yet, you know? It's just a practicality. I think it's a better idea.
If it helps, if it helps. I don't know why Christie, she a lot of times is compiling the agenda. I don't think we want to send it to the general public, but on Friday, when she is done before she leaves, she could send the three of us her tentative agenda, realizing that if something emergent comes up over the weekend, that that could be altered, if that would help, you know, in your preparation. And again, for me, you know, I don't have kids at home and I'm not running an operation, so I get it Monday, it gives me plenty of time. But if it doesn't give you plenty of time, I would think that.
And we can actually just start sending the agenda out Friday too, which has happened in the past, because it's just not.
Yeah. I would like, I mean, I think that.
It's not, I mean, it's not a easy deal.
If you could send it.
Yeah.
On Friday. But send it to three of us, it's kind of tentative, and then if there's something here that, you know, that ties in and you think isn't, you know, isn't reflective of what you want to discuss, then let's make that change before it goes up. That's fine. The only thing, we're talking about agendas, we had a joint email last night. We had a request for a public meeting on a win meeting, and I will tell you this in public meetings. I would much prefer at this point to visit with the individual about his and her, it's a husband and wife, their concerns to see. You know, we've had two public meetings, this has been in the news for 15 months or whatever. So I would prefer to not have a public meeting unless there's concern that has, we can't show him video in the previous discussion. But if you want something on the agenda, Jacob, all you've got to do is ask.
Well, I asked on Friday, and I understand she thought she gave me the answer, but I did not ever say I want to know. I had other things I want to talk about. So I just want to make sure going forward, draw a line on these resolutions, I can't leave.
Well, and that was when I reached out to Page County Attorney, he had advised me to wait until the next week. And I sent that back, and too, I guess maybe I should have included contact directly. But he had told me that I do tend to listen to our legal counsel when they advise us on something, so.
But as much as that, even if I was wrong, and it could have been a meeting that said, hey, this is what we have to do, go on. I mean, I still had the agenda discussion, I had some other things I wanted to bring to it also. So I just kind of using this as a line to draw, I would like to see things differently. I'm basically done, but this all goes through for the benefit of, I believe, for the benefit of Page County System and Page County. I respectfully request that all county documents that come under purview of supervisors, no matter what department, be provided to all supervisors, including me. On behalf of Page County System, we need to be unified team, all working for their benefits to otherwise have a disservice purpose. I hope that every one of those room agrees that every supervisor has received the same information, the same document, same moment, stop by us to foster a better county government, and that's what I want. I feel like it's, well, like the chair, if the chair is thinking he needs to handle, he's the chair. I would like to at least see him. I understand I'm not the chair, but at the same time, so I can prepare and do my job the best I can.
Yeah, I mean, I see both sides of this. I would comment, Jacob, that to Melissa's point that she probably isn't the best judge of where your knowledge level, your interest, your end with my interest. And so we do handle a myriad of subjects over a month's time, and there are lots of documents that are what I would consider are public documents, but they're not anything that helps your knowledge base, that may be an email saying, with a question or something, I want this on the agenda. So, I mean, to me, and again, to me, over four years, it's worked. If I have a question, I mean, I think if if you have that agenda, that proposed or tentative agenda on Friday, and you're not getting information that is of interest to you, then I think every document can be scanned and sent. But to me, at this point, if we try that, is going to change an operation, not that they can't do it.
I'm just an email forum, that one bill sends it all three of us to. That's all the supervisor email, just instantly goes with that.
Yep.
It's just to make it more accessible.
We can just add it on here and say auditor, EN, board of supervisors. So if anybody has anything from here forward, and we can send our emails after the meeting that just tells everybody from here forward, if they need anything on the agenda, we ask that you email and vote. So that way then, everybody.
But I think, you know, I understand your uncomfortable level here on this resolution. I get that. But I think it's abundantly clear. I mean, you make no mistake, the world knows that Jacob Holmes was not for 4%. I mean, if you ask bad on the street, you're going to get 100 out of 100 and say, well, Jacob's not for the 4%. Okay, so that's fine. So we had miscommunication on.
Yeah, I just want to resolve that, that's what I want to do, make sure I don't do that again. And I would like for even maybe just make it simpler, maybe it's good to have this stuff more, you know, people sit in the audience, make the resolution 17 in the agenda means nothing to them. And an agenda is supposed to be easily, easy to understand, even in the minutes, I don't, you know?
But at some point.
And the general man should be able to understand what that means outside of the meeting, they weren't here, they should know what that is. And it kind of doesn't.
Are you sure? Because if they looked at the resolutions, and for some, there would be more understanding in all cases? I mean, again, some. We have responsibility, don't we, to, if we have a question to ask, that's why you have public comment. I mean, it's hard to feed every bit of information for every person's needs.
I get that, but I just would like, I'm putting it in public, I wanted to, I would like to have those, I know those are done way ahead of time. I would like to have those whenever they're done. I think there should be some called three of us, just always look at these things we're voting on. Even if we could ask for them, it'd be nice if they just show up.
And that's, and that's the whole point. I think if you've got a question, like, I knew from the three years previous what I was doing, so I was aware of. And maybe we shouldn't stop, but I know in my head, I forget that you haven't gotten all the background. I don't know who you've talked to, and I think the whole thing, Jacob, it's on you, it's on me, and it's on Chuck to ask questions. They're not our servants, they're our providers of information. We are the three guys that act to, the three people that have to make those decisions once and for a dust, and it's nobody else's.
Right, and I should have stopped, and I see that.
And that's where that agenda comes out. If you see something, you've got a question. I can guarantee you, if you send a note to the Bureau of Services, somebody's going to respond to that, you, like, text it by phone or by email, to let you know what you missed.
Right. And I would like for myself and then the general public, it really does not involve to have those things, especially that big a nature, to be public. And and I would, I think that's the right way to do it. I think it should be, and I'm just, that's a suggestion. And I did learn something, I will never do that again. I did learn that, but.
Don't ever say you'll never do it again.
Well, I hope not. If it comes to a resolution, I think I learned my lesson last Tuesday night, but. Yeah, I will make more mistakes. But again, but that, I do not believe that that was a very clear way of doing that. And I want, I just wanted to make that draw a line here, and maybe work to improve that situation.
Okay, that's fair. Well, let's have Christie or whoever is working on the agenda send that out to the three supervisors as the tentative agenda on Friday, at your earliest convenience, so that we have it the weekend, and then we could, if we have a question, and if we don't get to it until Friday or Saturday, we can call you bright and early, 8 o'clock on Monday, and have plenty of time to get what we need to be informed. And then, again, to your point, on that Staten Road, we had, that was before you came on the board, we had some veiled threats of litigation. And quite frankly, the edge rut was a liability concern, and that's why I allowed that on the short notice. And right or wrong, I mean, the chair gets that choice.
Yeah, I understand. And I'd like to even know, some of those things that come along, because I remember back when I would ask the things on the agenda before I was supervisor, it did seem like it had to be ran by somebody, whether it be allowing or not. And when that's run by you, I would like to know what things maybe aren't really allowed. As a supervisor, if, or not, I would like to know how that works.
There's very little that won't be.
Right, what I would like to just know, has it happened, if it does happen or for a reason?
And that's why I brought up this request for a public meeting on Wednesday. At this point, I would not advocate for that. I'm just telling you straight up, telling the audience straight up. If we have some discussions with the individual who has concerns, and we don't, and we can't adequately answer those questions, then maybe the public meeting. For somebody who has a question and a concern, what's a public meeting without asking? To me, that's taking one step beyond. Let's try to answer questions. We can't answer questions in.
I have a presence, yes, an email or whatever.
Yeah, I came to all three supervisors last night at 10 o'clock.
I haven't looked at that yet.
Okay. So, and I'll respond. I did not respond, it was late, I did not respond, and we could all three respond. And if the two of you want it on the agenda, it's a public meeting, will be, but I won't go for a public meeting until we try to resolve his concerns and questions. So. So does that?
I haven't looked at it yet.
Okay, fine. But I mean, to your public comment, did we take care of?
Yes, I've got my mind.
Okay, is there any other public comment? We have several people on the line. All right, well, hearing done, do we have a motion to?
I have one, Chuck.
Okay.
This is Judy Clark. And I just wanted to comment in support of Jacob not knowing what the resolutions were. I look back on other agenda items, and usually when the resolutions are listed, the reason for the resolution or the name of the resolution is on the agenda. You look at January, the first meeting in January, and you have all the list of resolutions, and it says what they are. And I do know, I listened to the tape again, and I think it was 50 minutes, 20 seconds, Jacob asked if this was, if these resolutions were for amendments, and both you and Alan said yes. So that might have been a misunderstanding, but you still, that was still misleading. The other thing is, the auditor does have the responsibility, as the clerk to the supervisors, to do the agenda. And I don't know, I did not know your policy was a cutoff at 12 noon. But legally, people have an opportunity to get on the agenda until 24 hours ahead of the meeting. Now, maybe this is your policy, however, I used to put people on at 8 o'clock on Monday if they requested it because I could get it out before 8:30 on Monday. So that's.
If I could ask you to hold, Melissa, have some code comment relative to.
It does specifically state on our agenda duty every Tuesday that if any, please email any agenda request to the auditor by noon on Friday.
So it is a policy.
It may be a policy, but I don't know whether it's legal. The legality is that the agenda has to be published 24 hours ahead or notified. So legally, I think you could put somebody on at 8 o'clock that morning, as long as you get it on the published agenda by 24 hours ahead. I'm just a little concerned about all of this, because Jacob is new, and you know he's new, you know he doesn't know all of these things, and so I think it behooves you to bend over backwards to help him learn these things so that things can proceed smoothly.
All right, well, thank you, Judy, for your comment. Appreciate it.
And I, and Judy, with that too, I mean, we try if there's an emergency like Chuck discussed earlier. If there is something that comes up over the weekend and it's an emergency, we do try. I can definitely reach out and see if there's any legality to that as well. If there's an issue with the fact that we.
Well, it's just, it's just a concern of letting the public speak. I guess that's it.
Yeah, and I have invited Jacob in at any time to come in, and he's, I told him multiple times he can come in, and I'd be glad to sit down with him and go through anything if he has questions. So from my standpoint, I'm trying to offer any assistance I can to him, to help him. And I did realize.
That's good. That's good.
If I know what he wants, I can sure help him. I just didn't realize, and we all are working on the presentation and everything, so I'll sure try to make sure in the future he has a few more.
And we really need to utilize that method because of the quorum rules. I mean, I'm willing to help Jacob any way that I possibly can. I think Alan is too. We're not here, we're on the same team. We want, we want the best for Page County. We may not always have the same idea on what the best is, but I think all of us have servant hearts here. And with the quorum rules, it makes it difficult outside the meeting to, so you, and sometimes in a public meeting like that, Judy, you've been there before, when you have a room full of people and your mind is going in many different directions, sometimes bullets fly pretty fast, and you always can look back, I think, and say, well, I wish I'd have said that differently, or wish I'd have made this point or not made that point. But I would encourage Jacob to utilize Melissa as much as he wants. And hopefully, getting the agenda out on Friday afternoon will help clear some of this stuff. And what's that? No, that's a.
End up with Monday, that's true. Well, as a sitting supervisor, if something comes up over the weekend that's not going to hurt anything, I would like to have the right to put something on the agenda.
Sure.
That's what this is basically.
We'll reach out to legal counsel.
I need to probably reach out to legal counsel and see if it's what we have is, and then too, if you guys want to keep that, because if not, then we'll, I mean, we can always adjust, it's just been our practice, so. But I can sure reach out and see if legal counsel says that that's not allowable, or if you guys want to change it too. And then we can put that on the agenda for next week for you guys.
I guess, I guess I have one other question too. When you had the night meeting, which, you know, you were setting the night meeting, why did you go ahead and put other agenda items on the morning meeting when really all you had to do was do the election? Why did you have two separate meetings that day with things on each one? You could have asked the architect or the company to move the jail discussion to the evening or to another day. To me, you defeated the purpose of having a night meeting when you discussed other things in that morning.
We would not have met in the morning. We would not have met in the morning, it would have all been in the evening had it not been for the election, since we did have the...
I understand that.
Since we had that obligation, we felt, or I felt, that the public hearing on the budget was probably paramount to what was on people's minds, so...
But so are other things that you had on the agenda. I mean, they should, it should have all been in the evening if you were having a night meeting, you kind of defeated it.
Well, we had Zoom in the morning, and we had people in the room, so I respect your opinion there, but I think what we did was proper for the day.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the claims.
Yeah, I'll make motion to approve the claim.
Okay, motion by Holmes, second by Armstrong, to approve the claims. Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, you have the minutes from last time, any additions, deletions, or corrections?
I have just a couple, I don't know if I can, a little easier this time.
Okay.
I'll just print it from there. I put it in bold, I had a couple little changes in there, I just printed something easier, wouldn't have to, you could look at it, and I can, I got one there too. On the, I just had a question here. Should two separate meetings have two separate sets of minutes?
Minutes?
And does it even have the time and location?
The only time we have it, Jacob, is when we have a recess and come back later, but in this case, we actually close the meeting.
Yeah.
That's what we have now.
So we should have two sets of minutes, basically, since we adjourned and started again? That's just a question, I don't, I'm just asking, I was looking over here, and then there was just one little spelling thing somewhere, and then, oh, yes, cheering, just, I saw that.
Yeah, what page is that on?
The first page, well, my font might be a little bigger. I gave it to Melissa, Jeff Sherlock paragraph.
Yeah.
That's just that little deal. And then, on my, what I, on, let's see, in the paragraph where it says Auditor Wilhelm Hause went through the 2022 budget presentation, I just, I gave us a listing, where it says impacted, maybe I'm going to pass, I should have printed more. Uh, let's see, where did I, it's so hard to find them if you can't.
Yeah, it is.
I know what you mean.
Is it hard to find them?
It's after, it's the first resolutions on there, maybe, I don't know what that is. No.
The year, that...
The second paragraph there on that page.
Add on the first.
Yeah, yeah, is that where I'm looking at? It says Auditor Wilhelm Hause went through the 2022 budget presentation, you see that? Okay, if you go down to where it says Holmes discussed, see that down there?
Yeah, Holmes discussed the value.
That evaluations are increasing this year, and the impact that has on the budget, I can't, I've changed mine, I don't know what it says there. I just added, is the individuals are going to pay more taxes even though the levy is being lowered, is what I said there.
Okay.
That's the only correction I made.
Okay.
And I think that's about it. And the only other question I have is on the very end of the whole thing. I just was wondering if, we talked about Brenda, and...
As I was discussing, the ARCA search?
Yeah, all I was wondering there was, is maybe to say, what is ARCA search? Because I don't know if people know what that is, and what documents we're talking about, this is documents, maybe that it's just the records of the...
Recorder, recorder records, and she did tell me, I asked her that evening, you know, we spent this amount of money, how many books? She asked me, I talked with her again yesterday, she estimates that probably it will take another seven years in her office. This year, we'll conclude Melissa's office, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, and...
On what we're planning on.
Okay, on what we were planning on, but she would say another seven, and I asked that question just to give the expectation that, hey, we're not, so that next year somebody didn't say, well, you just spent on that last year, why are you doing that again?
Yes, uh, yeah, that's all I had, just if that is pertinent, just to say, hey, what is that, just a simple little nothing.
No, if that corrects the record to your satisfaction, that's what we need to do. I have no objection to that. So with those changes, do we have a motion? Well, I better let Melissa know.
What do you want our person to say?
I don't know, I mean, what do you, what, just, ARCA search is a firm or outfit that...
Third-party, a third-party vendor assisting the county with the...
Digitizing.
Digitizing of historic records.
Yeah.
Would that expect...
That sounds good to me. I'm just something, because I, somebody said, what's ARCA search? I didn't know, I was like, well, maybe we should say what that is.
Yeah, no, that's fair. Sounds like some prehistoric.
Yeah.
Yeah, could be recent.
Then you also want on the motion for the budget to change from voting nay, is over the 4% salary increase, because we feel that's too much?
Oh, yeah, I missed that, didn't I? Where was that at? I just changed, it just said over, and I just changed, where's that at? I lost that, I didn't see that on the way through. Yeah, there's somewhere it just said over the, where is that at? Can't even find it, no. Maybe I don't have it there. Yeah, oh, there it is, right there. It just says, sorry, you look about, it says, okay, it's after all that stuff, you see that page? It just says, voted his nay vote, in addition, his nay vote is over the 4% salary increase. I just, because he feels the 4% increase is too much.
Yeah, clarifies that.
I just didn't weigh my hat, and it says that, no.
Okay, got anything? Steve, okay, with the amendments and additions, I'd like a motion to approve the minutes, please. I'll motion to approve them now.
I'll second.
Okay, Holmes with the motion, Armstrong with the second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. So, motion to adjourn, and we will be back here next Tuesday at 8:30. Motion to adjourn, please.
So moved.
Second. All right, thank you for joining us, thanks for your input today.